Okay. Welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting for May 21st, 2024. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call, starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
John Papin.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
And thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are June 18th, 2024, and July 16th, 2024. We have minutes from our meetings of March 19th and April 16th. Could I have a motion to approve the March 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now for the April 16th, 2024 meetings, minutes. Excuse me, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm told that unfortunately, our screens are not working this evening, so presenters will have to do their best to present with old-fashioned kinds of approaches. Sorry. First item on the agenda is Riggio.
Good evening.
Good evening. This one should be pretty much procedural. The last year at the zoning board, we obtained our variances, so we're back in front of the planning board tonight just to wrap up final approval for the lot line realignment.
Any questions or comments by board members? Anything from our professionals? If not, we have a resolution.
Resolution is lands of Riggio, name of applicant Anthony and Camille Riggio, location 228 230 Lake Walton Road. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant simultaneously applied to the zoning board of appeals for variances and the planning board for a lot line realignment to create two residential lots from three existing lots, whereas each of the realigned lots would contain a primary dwelling and accessory structures, whereas the lot line realignment would bring the two proposed lots into greater conformance with zoning, whereas the LLR is an unlisted action under Seeker, whereas the planning board declared itself lead agency under Seeker and issued a negative declaration at its April 16th, 2024 meeting, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on March 26th, 2024 and April 23rd, 2024, whereas on April 23rd, 2024, the zoning board of appeals approved appeal number 4095 and 4096 and granted the requested variances for the proposed lots. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the lot line realignment for Riggio as represented on a map entitled Lands of Riggio, prepared by Dan Stokosa, dated 12/15/23 and last revised 3/27/24. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
And John Eichman. I'm an aye. Pass. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is JFE Associates.
Good evening, all. So at the last planning board meeting, I mean, I think the board is pretty familiar for those from the public that are here. This is the East Fishkill Golf Facility out on 52. Right now, there's a driving range, there's batting cages, and also a small dome facility, which is now leased by the Empire State Huskies relative to girls softball. They're a travel-type operation. What we were looking for is the installation of two fields within the front area. There's a significant area of grass between Route 52 and the start of the parking area in the front, so the idea was to install two outdoor fields there specific for the use for the Empire State Huskies. We talked about the fact, no tournaments, things such as that there, so it would be just for the purposes of practice when weather was decent and to get the girls effectively out of the dome. So I do know that tonight is a public hearing, so that's the quick spiel if you have any questions.
Well, with that, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So with that introduction, I'll take questions or comments from board members? Any comments or questions from our professionals?
Since the last time the applicant was in front of the board, we have received a couple of complaints regarding the parking on the weekends, and I don't know if it's during the week, but for sure during the weekends. The complaints provided pictures which showed the parking lots pretty full and parking along the side entrance drive, as well as some issues with some site flooding that also takes up some of the access drive and prevents proper ingress and egress. So there's been some concern expressed about the parking situation at the fields prior to these fields going in.
And I believe that there was a transaction that took place on the property. Was the property recently sold?
Yes.
Okay, so based on our current application, do we have the current property owner as the applicant on the application?
No.
Do you own the property?
I don't know.
Does JFE Associates own the property?
I don't know if it has gone through.
The... Who is JFE Associates?
JFE is the previous property owner.
Okay.
We went ahead and did a site plan modification for JFE because that was the original application that went under. So at the end of the day, you know, a name's a name. I will inform you that I know that these gentlemen, and they can elaborate on that further, have had a discussion with the new property owner, and they plan on continuing their lease. You can give them details on that, but...
Yeah, we have a new lease on the property going forward. We have a new lease on the property going forward, and they do know that we're here trying to, that we started this on the JEF, and...
East Fishkill Commons, is it?
What is it?
East Fishkill Commons.
East Fishkill Commons is the new owner.
But wouldn't it be not in our purview to be having this discussion right now without the current property owner as the applicant?
I think it would be sufficient if they submitted a letter from the current property owner saying that they support this application.
But do we have it?
I don't believe we have it in the file at this point.
Okay. How long does your lease run?
Two years. Two years.
Okay. Got it.
And you have a new lease with the new property owner?
Yes.
You have that with you?
No.
No.
I mean, I'm just deferring to the professionals right now with regards to it. I mean, I understand what you said about hearing what we're listening to, but I think there's some technical issues here right now that have to be addressed, you know?
Right, so, you know, it's totally within the board's purview to keep the public hearing open until you get all the documents that you want. Yeah, there are a number of applicants that come toward this board, Rich, that they're not owners, right? They're leasing. When we came in under JFE, nobody asked for the contract with JFE, so we will provide you what we need from the owner so that they understand that you understand that we are proceeding with this application.
Okay.
It's effective like an owner's consent.
So getting back to Michelle's comments earlier, are you prepared to respond to the letter that you received from HVEA engineers regarding parking and parking study?
Yes.
Great.
We went ahead and actually provided information relative to the parking, really indicating that there was a lot of open parking during a particular standard uses of this property. When the original site plan was approved, it showed a large area of parking. Right now, there is a significant amount of parking between the, I guess, the north end of the parking area and 52, which is basically, because it hasn't been used, all right, and it was gravelled at one time, is overrun by weeds, okay? So those parking spots don't pop out at you, all right? So two weeks ago, there was a, how do we call it?
Two weeks ago, that's when all the people were here. We did an empowerment for women and all the girls in the organization that are going on to play college softball to the next level. One of the young ladies that is part of the organization did a signing for all the girls and bring in women in sports and everything, and we did have it for an hour and a half, and it was bigger than I could imagine, and there was a lot of women that came in to support it. So there was a lot of cars there, but there's a lot of spaces in our dome that we can't, that we don't use, so there was cars that were parked probably where they shouldn't have been.
So I have a question. The parking lot that you're saying is overgrown, is that calculated in the 95 spaces that you're showing on the site plan?
Yes.
So I think for sure we need to have a condition that that parking area get mowed and is appropriate for use before we sign on the site plan, so we'll just mark that in our notes.
I would do that with, I'm sorry.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is, without it being paved, how do you have the efficient parking of cars, like striping to really establish your 95 spaces without it being striped?
That's before my time. I don't know how that was... You're asking me how it was established? I don't know that. It was here before.
The general statement, unless it's striped, how do you efficiently get all 95 cars in there if it's just gravel?
Well, I think because the parking has never been an issue, there's not a super efficient way to do that. Right now, however the site plan was approved, it was approved for gravel parking. So right now, I can tell you, I think there's some wood ties that kind of provide for like island areas and so forth, but yeah, there's not an efficient way of making sure that tail the nose.
Other than striping it and paving it?
Right. Well, other than striping it, we could put some, you know, barriers in, concrete parking barriers, I forget what they're...
I think we'll leave it to you to come up with a way to...
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Make sure that in fact, you know, you can fit 95 cars.
Yeah, and we certainly need those other spaces.
I think we'd have to see that, what you propose.
The 95 spaces were based upon the original site plan and the layout for that original site plan, but again, half of the parking spots haven't been used because there's been no need, so they got...
Well, it's worked up until now, let's say, right?
They got...
But now you're adding two more fields, so now we have to make sure that it works.
And those spaces should work, yeah.
And I would do that. That is part of us putting the work into those fields. We would make the parking there that's there, clean it out all up so that we could park there to get to the fields.
Again, it needs to be, I think, delineated and shown how it's going to be delineated.
And the other thing is opposed to just giving a full, I mean, what is being sought here is a variance for the property, or what type of, just a special...
Special permit.
Okay, so we can just, we could technically just issue like a one-year permit and see how this flies possibly?
Good, you can make them come back after one year. And I don't think there's any concerns.
Two with the lease. Does that make sense? I'm just, I'm not being, I'm just saying, how about two years with the lease?
I understand, but what I'm saying, I think, there's some, you know, there's still issues here because one of my concerns always would be, is we understand completely your explanation of your use. So let's just say on a day that you're not there, a bunch of guys see a field and they go out there with baseballs, bats, the whole nine yards, and they decide they're going to take the field and just arbitrarily play ball. You know, it's a big difference between, you know, a bunch of high school kids that can hit a ball, you know, 500 feet.
But it's private property.
I understand, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't necessarily preclude somebody from breaking the law and doing that.
And they're already there for batting cages and golf. What's to say that it's not there for them?
And they just carry it.
You could put up a sign, but again...
Who's going to police it? Then it becomes an issue for the town. So all's I'm saying is, I don't think that there's an opposition to it. I feel that though, there's got to be some type of parameters put on it so that if there is an overstep of these boundaries, that there's some...
We can do the one year. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, we can talk about putting some sign a job, private property, things such as that.
Yeah, no trespassing, stuff like that, but again, that still requires policing, so who does that? You know what I mean? It would then obviously become somewhat your responsibility, but at the same token, you know, then it becomes an issue for the town too, I'm sure, at some point. So that's why I'm saying that possibly this would be just a, you know, one-year possible move of permit.
I'm fine with that.
So that we get an idea of what happens for the full year, then you come back and we say, okay, this is what we saw over this period of time, and this is what we're concerned on.
Quick question. You mentioned you had an event there a couple weeks ago with a female empowerment.
Yes.
That's awesome. Is that the first time you've ever done that before?
Yes.
Does the, having these fields allow you to do more of those types of events?
I don't know. I never did it before. We did it, it was, those are just practice fields. That had nothing to do with softball. It was women that came into the dome to talk to each other and inspire women to be powerful leaders and all that. That's what this was about. It was bigger than I expected, trust me. It was an hour and a half event that I was pretty blown away and happy for in one way, and I guess it hurt the town somehow, but as far as the women and everything going on in our program, it was a good thing.
In the future, we'll probably look for a banquet.
You would probably look for, yeah, something to do, that kind of event. I never knew anything about it, and it was cool for us.
No, it sounds like a great event. I'm only concerned about the parking, right? That's been a concern from the time that you brought this to us from the beginning, and ensuring that if there is something else that comes up, that it doesn't become a problem for you or for anybody else, right? Like, you don't want somebody to get hurt in your parking lot because of an event you're hosting, that's terrible. I think the fields are great. I think the event is great. Just making sure that we have enough parking and space available so that if you had a tryout or a clinic or something that could easily draw a couple hundred people, that you can adequately, either adequately accommodate them safely or not, and then you don't go in that direction.
Well, we've never had a couple hundred people, but I understand what you're just saying, that I've never had more than 100 people, so, yes, I would have, if, they register, pre-register, so if anything came to a number that we couldn't, you know, make work for us, we would have to put it on different dates and go there. As far as an event like that, we would go outside, which we have done down 372, down at the end, there's a hotel there. We rented that a couple times for different events when we said, oh, this is going to be good because we know it's going to be, we're bringing in a professional softball player or something, and we've rented a place. This was just us trying an event, and it was very successful, and I apologize for that. I didn't know it was going to be as powerful as it was for young women.
And if we had the 50 parking spots cleaned out beforehand, we would have never even had that problem.
So that was my next question to you. So during that event, those parking spaces were not utilized because they were, yeah, okay?
Yeah.
So fair enough, so I think that...
I've got a question. You had mentioned that there was some floating in the parking lot. I'm wondering how many spaces were impacted by that and how you're going to mitigate the flooding?
I think that was more in the entrance.
It was more in the entrance.
Oh, it was more in the entrance way?
Yeah, over by the street park, by 50, yeah, like, by the fire, that street. Oh, what is that? Driveway. The driveway. The driveway.
Okay. My mistake, I thought it was in the parking lot.
No worries.
Were you still planning on utilizing the temporary backstops when there is practice?
Well, we got them so that we could have protection. If the board and everybody asked us to protect people, I said I could do that, and I, we have that protection, yes.
Did you provide us with like a diagram of what they look like or...
Yeah, not only, fortunately because of the TVs, but we actually provided this information on the plan itself.
Okay.
With dimensions and so forth, just to show what the backstop would be in addition to where the players would be on each side.
Okay.
So there was proper protection there, so, thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak about the project? Yes, sir. If you'd come up to the podium, relinquish the podium to the member of the public and please sign in, let us know who you are.
My name is Vincent Napolotano. My daughter is a member of the Empire State Huskies. She is a resident of East Fishkill. She was a member of East Fishkill Girl Softball. She slowly graduated and proved herself to become a member of this team. Her team is the 12U national champions because of these gentlemen. Their goal is to improve the character of the young ladies, their abilities, and what's best for them. Neither one of them have a girl on the team. They do this because that's their passion. They're not asking the town to do anything crazy. It's an improvement. Goodfellas Next Door is not an improvement. This is what's best for the town and what's best for the residents. I only know because I live it. I think you guys should really consider it and do what's best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who may want to speak for or against the project? There being none, I'll accept a motion to, well, actually, what we're going to do, I guess, is adjourn the public hearing because there are two things, I think, Mike, that we've talked about. One is documentation with regards to the new ownership.
Ownership.
And then how you're actually going to manage the parking, whether you're going to delineate the spaces or what have you. Is that right?
Right.
And three is the flooding. Take care of the drainage issue.
Michael, don't forget the handicap.
Yeah, exactly.
To add one somewhere on the side.
I think it's actually going to be more than one. Depends on how many spaces you have.
We'll run the numbers and whatever we need.
It's going to be close. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the drainage and where it is.
Drainage is the driveway on the fire department side of the, I don't know if it's their property because I don't know...
No, but it floods the entrance itself.
No, it actually is in the grass and then it comes when it's really...
I've witnessed it. I've seen it in the road.
I understand that, but I'm telling you where it's coming from, and then it does come onto the road. I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just saying, I don't know if it's the property, this property's fault, or if it's pulling up over there and then overflowing.
Raise your driveway up.
Then it's DOT.
I'm sorry?
Then we're in, if we're...
However it's flooding, it's well in, well off the right way.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Well off the right way.
We'll certainly take a look at all those. What we'd like to do in furtherance of, you know, I think there's a job to do right now between now and coming back relative to working on those existing parking spaces, cleaning those up, so I suspect that we could start working on cleaning up those parking spots now, next meeting. I want to make sure if we have a machine out there cleaning things up, everything's okay. You know, we'll come back with a plan. Likely we'll have bumper blocks, okay, in terms of what we're showing, but we can detail that, show those, so that's more defined. Look at the drainage, but if in fact we come back next month and maybe have a resolution for at least the board to consider, that would be helpful to us because we're losing the summer already.
So I'm going to defer to council, and council is nodding yes, so I think that'd be fine, considering where we find ourselves in the process, that would be fine. But, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing until next month.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll see you.
Great, thanks all.
Next meeting.
Yep.
Can you provide the date of the adjournment, please?
The adjournment will be to the June 18th, 2024 meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Stone Castle.
Good evening. My name is Charles May, representing Stone Castle LLC, which is a subsidiary of the O'Neill Group. The project is located on Sprout Creek Road, which is off of 376. It's comprised of 2.09 acres. It's zone I-3, which is light industrial. The, we intend to have an 8,000-square-foot warehouse on the site. It will be comprised of a one floor, and the second area will be mezzanine. We have provided parking spaces, which are required by the town code. I believe it's 10 parking spaces, and we have two of those parking spaces, which out of the 10 were handicapped parking spaces. We provided the town with a survey of the property. This would be the actual location of the site which we want to develop. Joining the property is actually a 100-year flood plain, which we don't intend to have any development in. We have had our environmental scientist on the site who's actually delineated the actual location of the wetland, so there are wetland flags which are located on the survey map. The actual area of wetland is the Sprout Creek location, which is approximately 12,000 square feet. We noted that in your zoning code, if you have one acre, you would have to have a buffer of 50 feet. We don't feel as though at this time that we require that 50-foot buffer, but even so, we're several hundred feet from the wetland area, so we won't be impacting it whatsoever at all. This would be the location of the actual 8,000-square-foot warehouse. The warehouse is intended to, as a matter of fact, in this zone, in this I-3 zone, which is light industrial, there is warehousing and distribution. This is merely going to be a warehouse. One of the caveats is the fact that there'll be no materials which will be stored outside. There is no intent whatsoever to restore any material outside of the site. The O'Neill Group performs a lot of work in Duchess County and in Orange County, and what they need is an actual area to locate or to store materials. These would be supply materials, it would be just, you know, lumber, nails, hammers, things along those lines. We've provided access point off of Sprout Creek Road. We feel as though we can get at least a 40-foot van into the site. We're going to take another look to see if we can get larger trucks in sight. We did have a comment from Richard concerning that aspect, but having said that, if we needed to get a larger truck in the site, we have enough street space that we could actually back into the area. A couple of things that we actually have located, a potential location for the sewage disposal system. The well would be in this particular area in the back of the site, so we would have a 200-foot separation because the septic system is actually higher than the well. The drainage, we have located, actually, our intent with the drainage would be to have dry wells, and we would actually have a, perform a pre and post hydrologic analysis, and we would also have infiltration testing to determine, you know, the size of the dry wells. Above and beyond that, we already have tested with our geotechnic engineer. We've been out there doing deep tests down to six or seven feet, and we have not had any indication that there has been any water table in that location, so we feel comfortable with the dry wells. So having said that, George Brandt is here this evening who represents the O'Neill Group, and I think he can elaborate further on the actual function of this warehouse so that everybody has a comfort level of exactly what sort of functions are going to occur in this location.
Good evening. My name is George Brandt. I'm the project manager for Sprout Creek LLC, which as Charles indicated, is a division subsidiary of the O'Neill Group. We are developers, builders in Duchess County, Westchester County, Orange County, New Jersey, Connecticut. We have a large and growing presence in this part of the state, and we're in dire need of storage, so this building will be for our own account. The first floor will store all manner of construction supplies, flooring, roofing, compressors, hand tools, ladders, ceramic tile, bathroom fixtures, door hardware, window hardware, windows. So we have an important need for storage. The second floor will be an office, small, a desk, a phone. We will use that space for storage of paper products, specifically... We will use that space for storage of paper products, specifically building plans, has-been drawings, operating manuals, and things of that nature that we do not want to store on the ground floor. The property will be used sporadically. So this is not Monday through Friday, nine to five type of occupancy. It will be used as needed. It will most likely be a driver and a laborer and a vehicle bringing in and taking out materials. There'll be no storage outside of the building. And in a 30,000-foot view, that's who we are and how we want to use the property. Be happy to answer any questions if the board or professionals have any.
Is the entire building going to have a second floor, or is it just a small portion?
It's a partial mezzanine. It's about 3,600 square feet of the 8,000-square-foot footprint.
Will there be any hazardous materials stored there?
No hazardous materials. We'll, you know, store compressors, generators. We won't store flammable materials. I don't believe we'll store paint or solvents or materials of, you know, of that nature. It's really dry storage for us.
What about vehicles outside?
No vehicles outside. No vehicles outside, no overnight parking, and no supplies stored outside.
Do you have an idea of how many vehicles would be coming and going in a given day or week?
As I said, sporadically. Maybe two or three times a week, maybe. We learned from the logistics crisis from a couple of years ago that when a builder is out of building materials, he's out of business. So we've developed a strategy to acquire the materials that go into the standard features of the housing that we develop. And when we can buy them in bulk for projects that are in the development pipeline, we do that. But we, as I said, we really don't have a place to store them. And frankly, we'd rather not pay Iron Mountain or Cube Smart for storage of our plans and files and things of that nature. We'd rather invest in our own company and create our own space that we control.
Other questions or comments from board members? Are there any questions or comments from our professionals?
I have a couple. Because there's a lot of floodplain on the site. We're referring you to our floodplain review person, which you should get a memo at some point from him soon.
Understood.
And then we will have to refer to the Architectural Review Council. And I just wanted a couple of questions about lighting. What are you proposing for lighting at the building?
I'm aware that there's a dark sky requirement. That's not unlike the dark sky compliant requirements we've encountered in other communities proximate to this project. So to answer your question, yes, we will provide dark sky compliant lighting. And I think there was an additional requirement for bug lighting?
Yes, well, that's a rating. Are you proposing to light it pretty much around the clock? Or do you need it for security, or are you going to have, like, motion sensors?
We're going to light it for security, and that will mean lighting to access the property in case of an emergency that will be motion activated.
Okay.
There'll be ground lighting, and there'll also be building lighting.
Okay, so to the extent that you can shield and put things on motion sensors and timers, that would be great and keep the lighting levels as low as possible.
Yep.
I just wanted to touch upon your delivery. You say you're purchasing both. So I would imagine sooner or later, you could get a tractor trailer there. You had mentioned you could back that trailer in. Is there enough room between your entrance and where your parking lot widens out that the forklift and get on both sides of the truck and unload that truck? I think we got to look at that because I don't think you want a forklift down the street to unload trucks.
Absolutely. There's a lot of traffic on 376. We want to be off the road.
Well, I realize there's not a lot of traffic on this particular...
Scott?
Scott.
He's just asking if you can turn your microphone.
This is just off 376, but nonetheless, I notice not a lot of traffic to still have a forklift and a truck out there for those other people. It's not a good situation. So I think you got to look at, take a hard look at unloading the truck, not just backing it in, but is there enough room to unload it?
Understood.
Okay. Any questions from our fire advisory? Yes?
Is there any plan to fire sprinkler in the building?
If... Well, I know for certain that if we stored hazardous material, the fire department would want a sprinkler system.
Basically, you've got an indoor lumberyard. How about heat and smoke detectors?
Yes.
Yes.
They'll be installed. We'll comply with the fire department requests, as well as the building department's request to make sure that the property complies in all aspects with the advice and the rules of the building code and the suggestions of the fire chief.
What's the overall height of the building?
Thirty...
Height?
I want to say 30 feet.
30 feet.
I can't quite see the... Is there traffic flow all the way around the building or just the front?
No, just the front.
Just the front, okay.
Which is an issue.
Yep.
Just if I could.
Sure.
If you don't mind. So as the engineer was commenting, this is the overhead door entrance.
Yep.
This is the area where he was commenting about being an offload dumpster, well, septic field. Where is it? That was a far...
And other means of egress throughout all four sides of the building?
Yes.
You mentioned storage of things like compressors and generators. Fuel as well fills?
I mean, generally, we don't keep generators and compressors filled with product when we're not going to use it. So we evacuate those typically and store them.
And lithium ion batteries at all?
No.
Any other questions or comments?
So I think we should declare our intent to be lead agency, and I think we need to refer to the ARC.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to declare our intent to be lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant to our ARC, Architectural Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So you can contact the planning office to schedule the meeting with the ARC, and also, we can give you some instruction on coordinating the secret review for the project.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is for Mr. Pajteen. Applicant is applying for a Tier 2 solar special permit to install ground-mounted
Good evening, members of the board. So yes, we are here to propose a ground-mounted solar installation at 7 Hamlet Way, Hopewell Junction, New York. This system will be a 19.68 kilowatt system with 48 REC 410 watt panels. We plan to do it in the backyard and provide necessary screening for both of his neighbors. Any questions?
Overall size of the total array is what?
In terms of, you know, physical measurements?
Yes.
It is 14.66 feet by 68.1 feet.
And the screening will consist of what?
It will consist of pine trees, I believe... What? Evergreens. We typically use green giants, right? Yeah, typically use tree giant giants. Right now, we have proposed three on the north side to block that neighbor's property, and then two on the south side. But if we need to add any additional ones, we're open to that.
Other questions or comments from board members?
So I would need to recuse myself from this, as this applicant is a tenant of mine.
Okay, understood. Any questions or comments? Anything from our professionals?
So does somebody else have something before me?
Right.
Okay.
Not sorry.
This is going to require a special permit from... It's a solar facility, so there's some special requirements with regards to meeting the permitting. So we're going to have to schedule a public hearing, because it's a Tier 2 ground-mounted. And the other thing is, we should probably... I'm just looking at the site right now. As far as the only neighbor of concern is likely the one that's going to be... Looks like you've got a lot of wooded area. Are you removing any trees?
No, I don't believe we're removing any trees.
Okay. No. Okay. So it looks like the neighbor to your south is going to be relatively well buffered from views into it, and it's going to be mainly the northern neighbor that has the views? Okay. So I'd like to... I would like to see some sort of landscape plan for... To show that you're going to block those views, just at least show how many trees you're going to put in and where you're intending to place them.
Sure. So we have a basic outline that we're going to do on the engineering, but is there something more specific you're looking for, like dimension of the trees or...
That would be helpful if you could just provide the tree details.
Let's see. How much do we... I just don't know how much we show on this.
So they're on page two of the engineering plan. They'll be six feet tall. The time of planning is based at eight inches. Mature height is 40 to 60 feet.
Okay, how many of them are you proposing?
Three on the north.
Just three? Okay.
Based on how big they're going to get.
And I believe the applicant meets all setbacks.
Okay. Okay, so will you be prepared to have our public hearing on the June 18th meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then I'll accept a motion to establish a...
You have two questions.
John, I'm sorry. My apologies.
No problem.
Thank you.
Do you have any plan? Is there going to be stored energy?
No. This is all connected to the grid.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to establish a public hearing for our June 18th, 2024 meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Recuse.
Okay. And one recusal. So you know how to get in touch with the planning department to send out the notices and everything?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Gabriella Rose, Flori's gas station.
Good evening. I wish I had the screen up, but I think we all know this one. This is the John Jay gas station across from John Jay High School. And it's been in operation for a little bit, and the applicant has... It's a fairly tight site, as we all know. It was a redevelopment site. And we have an air station that's in the back of the parcel. It's where the drive-through is, and it's also where they store their garbage. It's an air station. It's actually attached to the refuse enclosure. And over the course of years, the applicant's been having a problem with people who do use the air station. They grab the hose and they drag it over into Lake Road, and sometimes it makes its way back, sometimes it doesn't. So what he was hoping to do, two birds with one stone here, is try to move the air station up front. There's two existing footings that were put in, that were installed during, right after he took over the building, and he'd like to move the air station up, place it on one of the footings, and also provide a vacuum station. The... In doing that, we needed a bunch of variances from the zoning board. We've made application to that board just to get a feel for them, but they're considered structures because they do have a footing. So the air station would need a front yard setback. Same thing with the vacuum. Side yard setback variance would be needed for those two structures. In addition to that, the refuse enclosure is proposed to be expanded, and the expansion would be an enclosed cooler. The site, as you know, is very tight. Cooler space is at a premium, because they do share it with Dunkin' Donuts, both the convenience and Dunkin'. So the applicant, during this process, since we're going to be in front of the planning board, could we make a request to increase our cooler space? So in theory, the refuse enclosure would be extended out to almost the curb line along Lake Drive and then enclosed, and within that area have a cooler area for storage of product. Again, that would need a couple of variances. We did visit the zoning board last month to get a feel-good. They did entertain the application, but they wanted to get a pulse from the planning board, since we're going to have two boards involved in this, updating the site plan, showing those improvements. While we went through this process, we discovered that there is a propane cage in an ice chest in the back, that were not part of the original site plan, that are on-site right now and being used. So we incorporated those new additions into both the planning board application and the zoning board application. So there's an awful lot going on. So we're here to correct the existing conditions plan and also try to modify to accommodate a couple of improvements on the site. Any questions?
Brian, you mentioned that it's already a pretty tight site. How many parking spaces are you going to lose by moving that, the vacuum and the air to the front?
So the air station is in front of an employee space right now. In talking to the zoning board, there was accessibility. How do people use these new repositioned stations? And the thought was is to put a parking restricted sign on it, no longer than five minutes, you can park in front of these spaces. So the spaces would still be there, but to try to keep them free as much as possible, limit the parking time to, say, five minutes, 10 minutes, so people could use them.
So there would be some loss of parking, then?
There would be parking that would be dedicated to those two structures.
Yeah.
Right.
So you would say that...
But you're not actually removing a parking space.
Right.
We're not removing.
Yeah.
And when we went through this original site plan application, obviously, parking is a premium. It's a busy store. There is a parking lease agreement with a neighboring site, so there is the ability to control employee parking. So they do try to free up the site as much as possible with respect to employees.
So with respect to this, because there would be more activity there, I guess, with the air and stuff, so the backing up and all that... Because I know that site pretty well. It's very tight in there. Is it going to impede the other activity there, or is it just going to have the same continuity?
It's going to have the same continuity, because it's in the front, and it's, since those features are moved up front or will be located in the front, you have a standard backup aisle, which is a little bit easier than the drive-through.
Yeah. All right.
Other questions or comments from board members?
The propane storage, as it relates to the building and the refuse enclosure, is there any fire concern with that, or is that pretty standard?
Generally, not for tanks like that.
Okay. Okay. So they're basically standard grill tank type things?
Yeah, it's standard propane cage.
Okay.
Questions or comments from our professionals?
This is a coordinated review of the zoning board, so we need to declare our intent to be lead agency. And then, I mean, I think the only comment is, I think everybody knows, it's a very tight site. There has been concern in the past about having the vacuum and the air there, just because we didn't want anyone being there for a while. So I think that the compromise appears to be that the zoning board is trying to make a compromise by having him add sites to limit the amount of time you can spend in any one space. I think the only thing I would say, we just need to make sure that there's no one parking on Lake Avenue, or Lake Drive, I should say. And I guess that's all I can say, because it is what it is.
And then maybe to enforce the employee parking onto the already leased space so that they would indicate to the employees, please park over here, so that those spaces are readily available when needed.
Right, and I know, I know they do enforce that because they do pay a monthly lease on it, so they're insured to-
How many spaces are in that lease?
I believe it's five from the original site plan, I believe.
Okay. Then I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so I guess we wait for the next step with the zoning board?
Yeah, we have to see if they are able to obtain their variances in order to-
Okay, got it. Excellent.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Shenandoah Lake Estates.
So I got this one too. This one, again, I wish I had in my maps, but we're going to have to talk through this one. So this is Shenandoah Lake Estates, older subdivision. The original filed map dates back, I think it was actually drawn by hand, so it was probably, I think it's about 40 years old. And specific to lot 18, we have a client who purchased the lot. He's engaged in the building permit process, and this subdivision has a history of septic redesigns, just because of the original filed map and the accuracy of the soil testing done. So this lot was subject to a septic redesign. And in that redesign, the health department increased the fill amount. So the original filed map had two feet of fill shown, or actually described. The original filed map had no house locations, it had no setbacks. It just showed a septic area with five-foot contours. No regrading was shown, it just said two feet of fill. So independently, over the course of time, again, the septic's redesigned, four foot of fill. If you look at the, if you look at the topography, there's about 60-foot of elevation difference between the road and the back of the lot, so the lot drops off. When the applicant came in, we designed a house that's a front-load garage. We pushed the garage up to the front yard setback, and it's a walkout basement, so the house actually steps down and walks out. So we try to conform as much as we can to the natural grade, taking into account the decline in the site. We submit for a building permit, and it's determined that the fill's different. It fills different because of the health department, it doesn't match the filed map. It's greater, so therefore, it doesn't match the filed map. So we were asked to come to the planning board to discuss the change in grade as it relates to the filed map. And if you look at it from a material import, because we have the 375 max per year in-town code, just for the septic system, if we look at, I know this gets a little technical, but if you look at the original filed map, if you bring in that two foot of fill and you keep the 15% final grade on your septic, the bottom of the septic, you're going to have about five foot of material. If you look at that number, it's about 1,300 cubic yards of material just for the septic. Now, if you look at the new septic redesign, which is four foot of material, it's a smaller system, it's a different design standard, still a four-bedroom house. Now, we start with four feet, we hold the 15 for finished grade, now we have nine feet at the base of the septic system. So if you look at those fill numbers, actually, the original one was 1,100, the new one's 1,300. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy. We have to bring in a little bit more fill, but we are meeting current health department standards. So what we wanted to do tonight is bring in the plan, show you the grading that's associated with the approved septic plan, and then also talk about grading around the house. So grading around the house, if you look at from the driveway entrance onto Appalachian West to the back walkout, you're looking at almost a, almost a 20-foot elevation difference just from driveway to back of house. So in order to meet grade requirements, just to fill in around the house and grade, you're looking at about 1,500 yards of material brought in, just to contour around the house. So again, the original filed map didn't show a house, it didn't show grading, it showed five-foot contours. We do things a little bit different now, so-
So I have a question.
The numbers are a little different.
Let's, because it's pretty hard to conceive of what this means for the neighbors, because this lot is in between two existing homes, and it's, you know, it's not a large area. So I guess the questions I have is, how many trucks is that to do this? Like, how much construction disturbance? And also, what will the final grade be in relation to the other two homes? And how will you make sure that that fill, because, I mean, from what I saw of the site, the site slopes down towards a water body, and how do you make sure that the fill doesn't go to the other properties and stays where it's supposed to stay? Because we have had issues with that in the past.
Right, so from a constructability standpoint, you'd probably have to work from the septic area first, install the septic area first, stabilize it, and then you're into the, into the house area, in actual house construction. So from a sequencing standpoint, you're probably going to clear your house foundation area first, that's going to be your staging area, and then you're going to start importing fill for your septic system, build up that area. I think with this, we'd probably have a pretty advanced plot plan that we'd work through with Scott's office. It would probably, our slopes would be stabilized with JUPMASH. I'm sure we would have a more intense round of inspections as relates to construction as the fills being brought in and placed. But as far as matching the surrounds, the newer houses out there do have elevated fill pads. Some of the older houses, I don't know if they were subject to the health department redesign process, but the majority of the new houses that are remaining in that area have three-to-four-foot fill pads. This is probably one of the steeper lots, so.
So will it be three-to-four feet higher than the houses on either side of it? Is that what you're saying?
The septic system's going to start four foot above grade, and then it's going to be about eight foot above grade, nine foot above grade, you know, 30 feet away.
And then, I guess my question is, is there a way to achieve the fill? Are we, it's one thing to bring in fill in order to make a septic system work, but are we also bringing in fill to meet a certain house design, rather than, like, could there be a different house design that doesn't require this much fill? And is it because we want a certain house design that we're bringing in this much fill?
Right, so as far as the septic goes, we are at the bare minimum, septic material is expensive, so we have tightened that system as best we can. We've used new design standards, we've used infiltrators, so from a material import for the septic, it's as small as we can make it. From a house design standpoint, again, we have that front-load garage, which pushes the house, the front of the garage, right to that front 50-foot setback line. Most houses that we do have the side load, so by removing that, we're removing that fill that would be required to fill in on that downslope. So we've incorporated a front-load garage, and then we have that, again, we have that walkout, that step-down. We could probably lose a little bit of material if we do a little bit higher of a basement wall. I think right now we show an eight- or a nine-foot wall. If we go to a 10, there could be some material saved there, but there's still going to be some material brought in, just because of the way the existing, the way the existing lot is naturally, where that house position is.
But you're talking basically 2,800, 2,800 cubic yards. It's almost like, what, 70 trucks?
Yeah. And if you look at that original plan- Double that, I think it's more like 140 trucks. Yeah.
Well, depending, if it, 40-yard or-
20.
20, so if it's 20, because you can get a 40-yard, you don't have a longer tractor-trailer in there.
Right, and that, again, if you go back to that original subdivision plan, five-foot contours, no house location shown, and no grading for the original septic. So just, just from the septic standpoint, you're talking 1,100, just off the bat.
How old are the two houses on either side? Are they, have they been there for a long time?
Subdivision is over like 40 years old, something like that, or more? There's newer houses, older houses, it's a mix in there. I mean, I want to say they're probably the last 15 years, maybe, 20 years.
So I, I mean, there's technically steep slopes on this site, right? I'm, and one of, you're not really supposed to fill a steep slope.
So if you look at our plans, we did identify the steep slopes. There's two ridges. One is at the very front, where it actually crosses the garage. So if you look from where our driveway entrance is to, let's say, the front of our garage, there's almost a, almost a nine-foot elevation drop in 50 feet. So if you look at our plans, there's a narrow band that's shaded, those are the steep slopes right there, so there will be some filling of that, but that's just to access the site. The other band of steep slopes is, is in the rear yard. There is a couple hairline, steep slope areas that are greater than, they don't meet the, they are steep slopes, but they don't meet the criteria. There's, it's not just gradation, there's area requirements, length and width. So although they're shaded, they're not technically steep slopes.
Is there any concern with water coming down the driveway into the garage there?
Yeah, so what we did, as part of our plot plan process, we did a drainage analysis to see what is coming down and coming onto our property from neighboring properties. And what we tried to do is size a stabilized well, it would be riprap, that can handle 100-yard design storm, and it brings it down into that natural ditch. We show it riprap lined, we show check dams spaced every six to eight feet based upon So we have taken that into account. We've, and in addition to that, all our roof drains and footing drains empty into that swell to try to slow it down with those catch basins.
So procedurally, is this, are we going to, as a planning board, issue the excavation and fill special permit, or is this going back to the zoning board for any reason?
This would be with the planning board.
It's going to stay with the planning board?
Right.
But does it require any approval by the zoning board, or is this going to be coordinated review again?
I don't know, because this is, this is a plot plan. We don't usually see plot plans, but I think the reason it's coming to us is because it was the filed map. We have, we would have to sort of agree to change the fill that was shown on the existing subdivision plot, and I just didn't know if I had to go back to that.
We'll double-check the code and we'll look at the limits, and we'll see if you have to go to the zoning board or not.
What would happen if you put the garage in the basement?
I can't, I can't make grade come down, so right now, we're almost at max. So right, you know, town code says you can't go more than 4% for the first 30 feet, right? So in order for us to kind of make that, we wouldn't meet emergency service vehicles' access to that. So we actually come in as sharply as we can, we're showing it.
Takes you to the main level, not, you can go low level, okay.
Yeah, and I don't have a very wide lot, it's only 130 feet.
Even with a front-load garage?
Yeah, it's tight. I mean, the lot dramatically falls off as soon as you leave it. This is the reason why your lot's still here.
I, that's what I'm gathering.
Project was before you today, this may not be a lot.
Right, 40 years ago.
I mean, I don't know if it would be worth it for us to do a site visit, I don't know if anyone is up for that, but.
I think probably the first step is, staff has to take another look at this, we have to review it internally, and we'll get you a memo about what we see here and what the process will be going forward. It might be a little premature for the planning board to go make a trip there.
Okay, gotcha. Sounds right. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay.
All right.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Woodland Estates, Twin Creeks.
One second, Mr. Chairman, we're just going to set up the boards, because we were going to put up on the screen, but we understand that's down today, so. And even the neighbor. Well, while they're setting up, let me start. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Cooper, I'm a partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steymetz, here representing the applicant and the contract vendee, Leighton Properties. They are the contract vendee for a 100 or so acre lot along Route 376, located in the town's PRD district. The project we're proposing is called Woodland Estates. I think you said Twin Creeks has also been formerly known as the Herser Project as well, so this site, which we'll go through in a couple of minutes, has some history here, and some board members may be familiar with it, but let us go through the history and bring you up to speed. What we're proposing is a planned residential development consisting of 468 units, contained within 23 multifamily buildings, and then also a clubhouse. With me tonight is Scott Leighton and Ron Cypress, Scott and Ron from Leighton Properties, Terry Han from LADA, the project planner, and setting up the boards is Richard Williams from Inside Engineering, the project engineers. Good to see everybody tonight. The purpose of tonight really is to give you an overview of the project, of the process we believe that we're bringing through in the PRD regulations, under the town regulations, a little bit of the site history and the proposed project. Really, just a kickoff meeting tonight, the only thing we're asking for is to start the SECRE process by declaring your intent to serve as lead agency. There are some potential involved agencies, state agencies like DEC, DOT, and so we just want to start that process. I'm going to just summarize quickly the procedure, because I think it'll set the stage in sort of understanding where we're going and how the process will proceed, it's a multi-step process as we go through this review. And I'll turn it over to Terry to take over the site history and a little bit of the site itself, and then Rich from Inside Engineering will go through the project plan, et cetera, and then Scott wants to share the development vision for the site, and I'll come back and just talk about procedure, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. So the site itself is a 101-acre site in the town's PRD district. It was formerly 110 acres, 110.9 acres, but a prior owner had conveyed 10 acres to the town in connection with the, I think I said it before, the Herser Project, which was a prior PRD project approved for the property, which consisted of a 472-unit PRD project. Terry and Rich can take you through the specifics there. Under the PRD regulations, the PRD regulations permit clustered subdivision residential development, that's what we're proposing, starting trying to kind of group the development itself in the most appropriate area to preserve as much open space, kind of avoid environmentally sensitive areas on the site, and also just a little flexibility of design, that's the purpose of your PRD regulations. Under the regulations, it's a two-step process. The first is a master development plan review, which is the stage where we want to kick off tonight. That's really the overview, the design, overall layout, density, housing types proposed, access, and of course, the SECRE process. Under your regulations, it envisions an environmental impact statement, even before we saw that in the regulations, we anticipated that this would be an environmental impact statement situation. Your regulations actually say the applicant should show up with a draft EIS. We did not prepare a draft EIS yet, we thought it would be more appropriate to go through the formal scoping procedure with your board, where you actually agree on what areas of concern would you like us to look at, methodology for studying that, alternatives, et cetera, and go through the public process, and then, based on that adopted scope, prepare the EIS. We think that actually, yes, there's an extra step, but it's going to be a little bit more straightforward and efficient, because we'll be able to talk about what we should be studying, rather than just saying, we think you should study this. So once the master plan, once SECRE is completed, and then the master plan is, would be approved, that's when you would move into the site- would be approved, that's when you would move into the site plan process. I'm only giving you this, this as a context, because as we go through the plans tonight, I just want you to, to be aware, we're at the master development plan stage. So, so it's sort of a site plan level plans you're not going to see yet, because we need to progress that. What we believe we've got before you is, we've progressed it to an extent where we could commence the secret process, that, that's where we're at tonight. A little bit, a little bit too deep into the weeds and procedure, but I just wanted to do that before I hand it over to the team to really go into the, to the plans. So with that, let me turn it over to Terry, I'll, I'll be back at the end to add, kind of go through our ask tonight.
Good evening, Terry Han, LADA, PCU, or the planners for the project. The, I want to take you back in time, 1988. And in 1988, under the 1980 PRD regulations, there was an approval granted on this property for 478 or 472 units. They were mostly townhouse, and basically, they were spread from property line to wetlands on the layout. It involved approximately 70 plus acres, 78 acres of disturbance. The wetlands were different then when, than they are now, because we've updated those, but the construction was started on the project in between 1989, 1990, 1991, 1992, and stopped, because we all know what happened in 1990 and 1991. So it was, led, they dug a bunch of areas for foundations, they put in pipe, they dug some detention basins, they installed wells, they put in a water tank, they put in a temporary bridge, they did any number of things that were the start of construction to, in accordance with the plans, that were fully approved. They had full agency approvals, AG agreements, a whole set of site plans, so they had every intention of completing the project. Economics being what economics are, there were other applicants here, and we don't really need to speak about those particular applications, that's in the past, and so we're just focused on this particular project and this particular application. Rich, you want me to do the environmental, or you want to do it? Because we're now, in 2024, actually, I think I'm going to do this, in 2024, we have new floodlines, okay? We have new DEC requirements for endangered species, excuse me, we have any number of things that are now sort of setting the tone as to what it is that we're trying to do and what we should be paying attention to, and the sort of things that we'll probably discuss in the impact statement. So the floodline is different than it previously was, but we do have a new FEMA line for the property. You can see it in blue, pretty much follows the Shenandoah Creek and the tributary to the Shenandoah Creek. We also have, associated with the creek, there are two sets of wetlands. One is a DEC wetland, which was recently discussed with the DEC and confirmed, although we're waiting for the validation map. But we have town wetlands and the associated buffers, and we have DEC wetlands as well. So for the most part of the project that we're proposing, we're not disturbing any wetlands, with the exception of the potential, no, we're not disturbing any wetlands at all. The existing, the proposed entry has no, we have a stream crossing, but there are no wetlands associated with that portion of the stream, because the banks are really steep in that area. We're proposing to use the same access point as previously approved, and that pretty much We did prepare a full environmental assessment form, a long form for you as part of our submission. So you do have that information available to you. Rich?
So good evening, Rich Williams with Inside Engineering. I'm going to let Scott talk in a few minutes about the product, but we are envisioning a modern residential product that will allow us to keep young professionals and seniors in the area. As Terry mentioned, we took a fresh look at the environmentals before we started looking at layouts. So we've met with DEC. The DEC wetland boundary that she did show you has been confirmed in the field, and they're in the process of looking at validation, of the validation maps. Extending beyond that, obviously, the DEC wetland is also regulated by the town of East Fishkill, but there is an additional wetland on site that we believe regulated by the town of East Fishkill, which was flagged this past year by our environmental consultant and survey located. But let's just start with getting everybody maybe a little oriented as to where we are. I think we all know the site, it's right down the street. Looking at the site plans that we've brought before you this evening, you have New York State Route 376, you have Mark Lane, and I have a mental block, so I always say this road name wrong, Steven Drive. What we're proposing to do, as Terry mentioned, is construct the original access where it is. We envision a boulevard entrance that comes in off of Route 376. As part of that, we'll have some improvements to Route 376, which will require permitting with DOT. We envision turning lanes coming into the site, and that'll obviously be advanced and developed when we start preparing traffic studies as part of NEIS. Then we come to the crossing over Shenandoah Creek. Just to get everybody oriented, Shenandoah Creek flows along the bottom of the page, where it intersects with Fishkill Creek, Jerome's page up, page down. As you heard mentioned in David's initial remarks, there was a 10 acre, or 10.9 acre piece of property that was already donated to the town of East Fishkill as part of the original project approvals. That's located on what would be your page right, or my page left, on the northern side of the site, just north of Mark Lane. And that's this area here, which encompasses the Fishkill Creek. So we're going to come in off of 376 with a boulevard entrance, we're going to bring that boulevard down to a 24 foot standard two lane road when we cross Shenandoah Creek. Obviously, that is to minimize our impacts to the creek itself. We've started looking at various bridge designs to get over the creek. It's our goal to limit the disturbance to hopefully avoid Army Corps permitting, but again, we have to start working through those details. Right now, we're still very much, as David mentioned, at that master plan stage. Once we get over the creek, we then want to reintroduce the boulevard. Again, you know, Scott's going to talk to you in a few minutes about the upscale community that he's looking to build. So streetscaping is very much in our minds, you know, creating that boulevard entrance with street trees, nice street lighting to bring you into the property. You're first going to see on your right-hand side a clubhouse. This, this type of development will be amenity laden, and I'll let Scott talk about those in a few minutes, but, you know, you'll hear about things such as full, you know, full-length swimming pools, paddle tennis, racket, paddle and racket tennis courts, gyms, you know, spas, things like that, lounges. Once you come into the clubhouse area, you then enter the development. In looking at the most recent environmentals, we have compressed this development down from the previous site plans that were presented before this board. I think you heard Terry mention the, the original Hersher subdivision was over 70 acres, based on her initial calculations. We're at 35 acres of overall disturbance. So we are significantly condensed from the original approval. Again, we're not seeking to disturb any of the New York State DEC adjacent areas, and we ourselves are, we're looking to stay out of all floodplains with our development, and respect the environmental constraints as much as possible. The site itself lends itself to a development running north-south in this portion of the property. On the slope maps that were contained along with your EAF, you'll see the property is gently sloping. There are minimal steep slopes areas, mostly located around the original foundation excavations that were made, but most of the site is less than 15% slopes. With that being said, we have two types of housing units, which we'll show you pictures of in a few minutes. There are the big houses, which are 12 units each, and then there are, and then there are larger multifamily buildings at 36 units. Overall, we're providing 933 spaces of parking, 776 is required. Again, we're planning on studying and hopefully using to the maximum extent practical the existing already constructed water infrastructure, which consists of wells that have already been drilled, and then we have to evaluate the condition of the existing water storage tank that was built. This property is in the sewer district. We do believe that we're going to stay under the allocated flows that were discussed in the previous map plan and report that were provided to us, and we see there are two ways to potentially connect into the sewer treatment plant, which we'll discuss as we get into the EIS. One is potentially tying into force mains on Route 376, and the other is a directional drill that would go under the Fishkill Creek and tie directly into the wastewater treatment plant to our north. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, to talk a little bit more about what the development is and some of the amenities he'll be offering.
Scott Leighton, Leighton Properties. Been developing properties in the New York metropolitan area for more than 30 years, and right now completing a couple of active adult communities, which we've done, five of, under the Vineyards brand, from 91 units to 284 units. Built a couple of buildings in, in urban New York, one in Manhattan, 14-story building, one in Brooklyn, built in Westchester, Putnam, Duchess, about to start a job at Marburg, New York, did a deal in Poughkeepsie. So I've traveled these roads before, but not, have not been, had the pleasure of doing anything in East Fishkill. And I see the process, since I've been doing this, is, and some of these might, you know, sound cliché-ish, but they're genuine for me, is that this is a collaboration. Coming into a community that I've, again, as I said, have traveled these roads, I don't live here, but, you know, I've appreciated what, what I've seen in East Fishkill. And I look at this as, as a process, and I look at this being a collaborative effort to develop what I think is something that's needed here and best for the community. So, and what I see in a lot of the Hudson Valley, upper New York areas, is that there hasn't been a lot of new product that's been built. And so the new product, there's good new product and not so good new product, so what is happening in lots of parts of America is that the rental market, which was always frowned upon as being inferior, is really just another, it's a different type of ownership, but it is now really reaching the same quality at many levels as homeownership. So my intention here is to build a very upscale, high-quality development. And how do you get high quality? Well, you know, some is building materials and the actual, you know, construct of the apartments. These will be, you know, we look at light and air as being one of the biggest differences between some of the older product and newer products. So these are going to have large windows with transom windows above, so all the apartments will have, and we'll see a couple of pictures, will have lots of light and air. Nine-foot ceilings, high energy efficiency, wood floors, and, you know, as I said, you know, stainless steel appliances, ceramic tiles in the bathrooms, you know, high-end. I think everybody knows what high-end means, hopefully. So also, we are, as part of this, and not just by, you know, materials, we're very design-conscious. If you look at some of our other, other developments, I'd be happy to show you, we really look at design being a critical factor in people's enjoyment. Part of this is, Richard said, you know, we're going to have a boulevard entrance here. So that is, you know, sets apart, sets a tone for, for the development. You know, lots of plantings, very welcoming, and, and warm. And that's again, very much a part of our brand, you know, warm, inviting home. We're thinking, I don't know what's legal or not, you know, leave that, you know, as we get a little bit down the road, but potentially a water feature as you first come in, and, you know, so again, that is, you know, part of the, the high-end that we're talking about. Let me see what else. So the clubhouse, which is really, in all of the active adult communities that we built, that's really the nature of the, and the heart of these developments. And not just for the activities, that obviously goes on there, but what the activities relate to is people coming together. It's, I've seen incredible bonds, people start, you know, clubs, travel clubs, things, you know, real friendships get, get made and sustained there. The clubhouse is going to be, again, for the, obviously, the density that you're hearing is going to be substantial. Obviously, a pool, again, also, you know, pavers around the pool, not concrete, areas to, to have food around the area, inside a lounge, large lounge, bar area, card tables, pool, a very big workout area, people are, you know, of this ilk, you know, high-end, they're looking to stay in shape, and we'll provide up-to-date, large gym area, so people do not have to belong anywhere else. Just to step back also, the community itself will be obviously self-managed, so there will be, no, there would not be dedicated roads, so there'll be no need for, there'll be private sanitation, there'll be snow removal, it'll be on us, you know, all landscaping, et cetera. So taking less of the town's services for this. Back to the, the amenity package. So I'm a, I'm a tennis player and played platform tennis, and now padel, which is different than paddle, and I, I look to really create something here that is racket-directed. Definitely some platform tennis courts, which are usually only in country club type of environments, padel, which was really a European sport, very similar, pickleball, and, and those types that will really attract, I think, again, the young, affluent, or empty nester type of, type of person that's going to want to live here. So like an exquisite clubhouse. Just a little bit also, I mean, this sounds a little mushy, but, you know, there's something called value engineering, which is done usually at a later part of the design process, which is, I can't afford that, can't afford that, can't, you know, can't do that. I look at it a little differently, I'm not saying that we won't value engineer, but we really, as a little, again, mushy, like human engineer. I really, you know, the, the goal for me is to create something human and approachable and warm for both, you know, people visiting, but the people that live there. And, and we're, we're good at doing that. There's, there's, you know, the design could, could, again, bring, bring that together. So I think that's, did I say everything I needed to say?
Delete.
Oh, the buildings, thank you, thank you. I forgot to eat lunch today also. So this is called the Big House, from, is from Humphreys out of Texas, they've developed it. Look at the windows here. So this looks like one house, and there's basically, in this one, there's 14, 14 apartments, seven on the bottom, seven above, with doors that come around the side. The entrances here, I think there's one, one on the side here, here, there's, again, I don't have the floor plan in front of me, but there's basically, again, the whole object. It's not to, not to design your, you know, just typical, and maybe not so typical, but it's. maybe not so typical, but it's, again, feel, this is a feeling, I think you can get from it, that this is not, you don't see this every day as a residential rental. This is, you know, again, very, very high-end design. We believe that we can create this here. Again, the density helps us do that, helps us spread the cost of the clubhouse over more units. It helps me take the infrastructure costs that I have to do. I imagine we're also going to contribute to some of the other positive impacts that we might have or that exist today with traffic, and we're obviously willing to do that and want this to be the best for everybody. But again, this is just giving you an indication, hope to build this exact building, and, you know, depending where everything goes. And then the, it's tricky, reverse. All right. So this is a little bit more of a typical 36-unit building. Is it going to be a walk-up or an elevator? Not really sure yet. There's a lot of design things that we haven't done yet. But it's a smart design still with being somewhat of a typical 36-unit building. 36s are usually done in 12-unit pods, so it's 12, 24, 36. So this is 36. And as I said, you know, could be elevator, but you just have to make the halls a little bigger and provide for that. Substantial parking on the site. There's, I think, 900 spots?
936.
Huh? 936, 900 lots. And again, also too, what we've talked about, which is not just, you know, words, which is, we really are trying to, you know, keep as much of the nature there. I know we're constrained because of wetlands, but beyond that, I like, I like that idea of having, you know, more condensed, a big clubhouse where everybody can congregate, enjoy each other's company, do their activities. Again, here with a skew towards some of the newer racket sports that I think will be, you know, again, padel particularly is a sport that is growing tremendously. But keeping a lot of the buffer here, so you're not going to feel as much as you're in a, you know, 472 units, you're not going to feel that. There's a lot of green around here. So I think, I think I covered everything. If I haven't, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So just to wrap it up in terms of procedure, for tonight, what we're asking is the board to declare its intent to serve as lead agency. There are some potential involved agencies, for example, the DEC and some other state agencies. We think your board is obviously the appropriate board to serve as lead agency. In fact, under your PRD regulations, you're supposed to. But that would start the process so that we can start the scoping and discuss what the EIS would look like and get more details to the plans. But we got to take that step first. So we're happy to answer any questions about the site, about the project, about the procedure, if you want to. And I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions by board members or comments?
Two. It's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. Do you got any kind of trip generation numbers? Because I don't know if you've ever looked at 376 during, say, 430 to 530, but it's hard enough just pulling out of this parking lot, much less adding, you've got over 900 spaces, let's assume there's 600 more cars there. So I'm not sure how that's going to be dealt with. And also, I'm wondering about a sidewalk between your boulevard entrance to connect to the sidewalk that goes past, what is that, Cannon Lane or whatever there, to connect into that, so people could actually walk into town.
So with respect to the trip generation, what I can say is, obviously, we've done some initial analyses, but we assume that that would be part of the EIS, so that this would be, you know, really a deep dive into that. So to the extent that in our scope, there'd be a traffic study, or, sorry, there'd be traffic impact analysis, and then which intersections you want us to study, where are the question sections, all of that would be spelled out during the secret process. The sidewalk certainly can be evaluated as part of the review as well, but I wanted to just hit the trip generation, not to avoid the answer, but more so that it's coming.
Good.
How many bedrooms are in each of these units? Obviously, there varies at 1, 2, 3.
So the combination between 1, 2s and 3s.
Don't beep me to it.
152, 1 bedrooms.
I knew she was going to beep me.
138, 2 bedrooms, and 78, 3 bedrooms. So mostly all 1 bedrooms.
For the record, there was a slide for that, but we.
You can do it next time. Is there a scenario where you have considered this in a townhouse or condo style for sale versus rent?
We have not, we will look at that as a possibility. Generally, what becomes, can hear me cut?
You can just be in the microphone for the TV, please.
You know, I've done a decent amount of for-sale housing. So with that, again, about combining that with rental, if it was going to be mixed use, there are some issues with using the clubhouse jointly between renters and owners. It will have to be a, you know, basically a condominium that I have to go to the attorney general for approval of a site. We'll have to subdivide wherever those for-sale units would be. I'm open to looking at it, though. I have, you know, no problem, you know, in general for some for-sale, but I think, you know, truthfully, I'm not going to build a vertical for-sale like of this. I wouldn't sell this.
Sure.
These are rentals, the same as the other. So potentially as townhomes, and the problem with townhomes is that they take up more space, which then reduces, you know, the amount of density, or I have to take up more land, which then works against having the best amenities possible. But maybe there's a section or part that we can do that, but it's not going to be a predominant, you know, number.
So I'll tell you, the comment about attracting young professionals and retirees is absolutely on point. We need that. We have discussed in previous applications that there lacks pride of ownership in rental communities, as I'm sure you know.
In rental communities?
Yeah, absolutely. There's high turnover. People don't come to stay. Rent prices are really high. They don't tend, in this market, to lend themselves to purchase, so people move on. They're not going to then purchase in our community necessarily, maybe, hopefully, but likely not. The ability for an affordable, as townhouses generally tend to be, access to homeownership for people who are downsizing and people who are trying to come into the community, in my mind, and I can only speak for myself, is a much bigger draw. Townhouses take up more space, so therefore, less impact on traffic in the community. There's, you know, townhouses bring families, so access to the school would be, you know, a potential impact. But I think, from my perspective personally, the purchase option is much more appealing to me.
I understand.
Than a rental community like this.
If I can just, I think I touched on it before, from my vantage point, and again, of seeing this and being in a lot of different communities and going to many conferences, et cetera. And I understand where, again, that's a little bit of where rentals have been. This, this type of option, you know, at the levels that we'll be renting at, will be, and what's available, is like homeownership. If I was going to sell these as condos or whatever. So it's not, I think, the pride of ownership, and I understand that. I think overall, I can't complain with that. I can't argue that. I think at any level, a homeowner is probably going to be more responsible than a renter. So take that as a, but with that, with this rental, I think you're going to have a different type of clientele. I know you're going to have a different type of clientele. Will this still be transient? Will there be still somebody here that's an IBM-er that's looking for something, you know, special for a year or two, and then moving on, and he's transferred or something like that? Surely. That's, that happens. Happens a lot in for-sale also. And a lot of these for-sale would, again, what's been demonstrated through COVID, right? I didn't even know, how many houses are rented? All right, never used to be. I thought a house is a house. But houses is a large component, and it's becoming more and more. There's even build-to-rent homes. So building homes for rent, it's a BTR, it's a big business, happening everywhere in the country, other than really, you know, New York. But, so I agree with you, homeownership, no matter what, has a certain sense of pride and that. But I think, again, I have to look at this as what I'm trying to hit, which is something that's not here, that something will attract people to come here because they can't get it anywhere else, and retaining the people that are here. So I understand what you're saying.
What percentage of the houses will look like what you show here versus the other side?
It's a great question.
Well, the plan you show, the.
So these are the big ones, and we've got 1, 2.
8.
3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 of those, of these buildings.
And 8, 8 of the 3-story.
Okay. So 15, but those 15 have basically, these are showing 12 units. The one that I showed you was a 14-unit one, so we could potentially make these 14-unit ones and diminish a little bit of the 3-story.
But the majority of the units of the buildings are the big house.
They're the big house.
Yes. That's what I mean, not the bigger building. You referred to it as the big house.
Right. So the big house, which is the smaller buildings.
Yes.
There's going to be a quiz a little later, but the big house is more buildings, but less units, because the bigger buildings have 36 units.
But obviously, they're much more attractive than the bigger building.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So that.
Is that one? We got one, we have one so far. Anything else?
The other thing I just wanted to ask about the general, the plan or the property, have you, how long have you owned it as opposed to its previous ownership?
The arrangement is on in a joint venture with the previous owner. So Leonard.
So I mean, obviously, he's paid his taxes and everything up to this point. So even though the project failed, this continued to be a property that was in keeping with the standards of.
Yeah. I mean, they're still paying sewer taxes and real estate taxes as well, but still paying the sewer friends. Yep.
Just curious.
So what is your next step?
So, well, I would defer to counsel, but we're requesting that the board declare its intent to serve as lead agency. And then, once you become lead agency, we can schedule a scoping session and move from there.
So I'll start off, and obviously, this was a very thorough initial presentation. I think before you would circulate, generally, there are a few pieces of information that you need and a few items, namely, one of them is the application fee that we don't have at this point, so it's not a completed application.
Just on that, I think you guys just still have to get back to us as to what it is, because the issue is, it's not on the books, as to what.
And one of the other issues that I think sort of impacts the application fee is the number of units as well. So I think right now, I think both the applicant's team and the towns team have been doing a forensic audit of every document that's ever been published about this PRD. It's been very, it's actually been a very intense exercise. And I think still, there's some dispute about what the actual number of units that the applicant has vested rights for actually is. So I think while there, you know, I think while it's a very thorough initial presentation, I think it's probably a little premature to circulate for lead agency.
Okay. The, if you, the only issue I'd say with respect to the application fee is because there's an application fee that's on your books as to this PRD application. Once you tell us how much it is, it'll be paid. I just don't want, I don't want that out there as if we're saying we're not paying.
That's total clarification.
Gotcha. Happy to work with counsel on what else is needed to get to that, to get to that step. Obviously, the focus is on this application, not the vested rights question, but actually the EAF and everything that go before you. But we can work with counsel on that.
Plus, we still need the actual application for a building permit.
No, not for.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, not for the building permit.
That, so the application right now before you is for the master development plan under the PRD. Because it's a two-phase process, and you've got to approve the master plan before you can move to the site plan, you got to complete secret first to do that anyway. So you wouldn't get a building permit application yet until that second phase anyway.
So I just want to explain to the board, the PRD no longer, well, it exists as it's been grandfathered with regards to particular projects that had received the PRD designation in the past, but it ultimately merged or turned into the CRD district, which is Conservation Residential District, which was Hope Boglin. It was, for example, also the airport site is also CRD. So in the past, this particular zoning requires that the applicant prepare what they call a master plan for the site. And there's a lot of procedural steps that go along with the zoning. I will try to get everyone a copy of the zoning, because it's, it literally no longer exists in the code anymore. So I will try to get everyone a copy of that, so you can peruse it and understand the procedure that they're.
So this is kind of somewhat of a carryover from its original.
Correct.
Okay. That's just, I wanted to understand.
We included copies of the code in the application, so it should be in the packet, but.
I'll make sure, make sure you guys.
How does the new CRD compare to PRD? What's changed about it?
I can do an analysis for you to try to describe between the two, what's happened, what the difference is. There's, I mean, the CRD was more based on conservation residential development. It was more focused on anything, on preserving some larger areas. And then I think also, but it did also have the component that you could have multiple different types of housing. The CRD allows you to have attached housing and single-family housing and wind development, similar to the PRD.
But based on wetlands and stuff, that's even changed this, the actual property availability to build on.
Somewhat, yes. Although, the only thing I would say is, the site's still within your PRD district. You go to your zoning map, the town zoning map, it's PRD.
It's still mapped as a PRD.
Okay.
This will be under the PRD analysis.
Understood.
Right. So that means, so if we had come in with anything else but a PRD application, I'm assuming staff would have said to us, what are you doing? It's the wrong zoning. So that's why we're proceeding under those PRD regulations, because that's what's up.
Would it benefit them for it to be a CRD?
No. Not under what's proposed.
Okay. I think we'd all agree that this was a great introduction to the project. We thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. I think once you're able to satisfy the things we need to be able to actually move forward, we can declare intent fairly expeditiously.
All right. Good. We'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is landmark union.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Daniel Steinhegan, member of the firm of BD Padavano in Montvale, New Jersey. I'm a little bit far afield from where I'm normally at, but nice to be here tonight, here on behalf of Cormoros Hopewell LLC. We're here on the former William Tell property. The address is 792 Route 82, Main Street. We're in the B2 zone, here for concept sketch review for a new bank branch. It's going to be a Chase Bank. Have Mike Checha from Stonefield Engineering, our project engineer, two of our developer reps, Jordan Lebowitz and Brian Waslenko are here if we have any questions. But Matt's going to introduce the project. We were anticipating putting up the plans on the board. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen. But Matt, if you want to come up and just talk about it. But Matt, if you want to come up and just talk about it, I, I hope you all have the, the sketch plans that we submitted. Do you all have those?
They're in your file.
Yes.
I know, I'm sorry.
Because unfortunately, I don't think we have the boards that we were in. Thank you. Okay. I can put, I can put them on my iPad, but I don't know if that's gonna be over. Super easy, great. All right, Matt, do you want to run through what we're doing and briefly go over where we are, what we're doing?
Great, yes, thank you. So just to introduce myself, my name's Matt Checha, with Stonefield Engineering and Design, here as the civil engineer on the, on the project. So like we mentioned, the site is located at 793 Main Street, Route 82. It's in the central business, it's in the central business B2 district, which is permitted for banks, which is what we're proposing for this project. We meet all the dimensional requirements, so we're not anticipating any variances, but I'm gonna take a step back and just get everyone familiar with the area. So the site is approximately three-quarters of an acre, and it's located on the north side of, of Route 82, in between the Anthony's Pizzeria and the old, I believe it was an old hot dog stand. So the site's on the north side of the property, with commercial properties to the south, east, and that one commercial property to the west. To the north is some large wooded areas, and our property today is a, I don't want to say a pad site, but a vacant site. It was a formal, former hardware store, and right now, that building was demolished or removed. Burnt down, excuse me. And today, it's just a sub-base parking lot with an old foundation. So what we're proposing is a 3,331 square foot Chase Bank with 30 parking spaces, where 14 is required. We're keeping the existing curb cut as it is today, and if you can envision and look at the plans, right, we're going to enter in the same curb cut, we're gonna loop around to the east, the building will be on the west side. And what we also have is a bypass and a drive-up ATM lane that will be used as an automated ATM, but for your vehicle.
No window.
Yeah, no window, no teller, it's just an ATM that you can access with your vehicle. We did some due diligence on the property, and we actually spoke with the water and sewer departments, and they've located or informed us that the utilities for the property are located in that property line to the northwest of the site. I believe there was a shopping plaza that was designed a few years back, and they created a utility corridor behind our property to access the utilities for that new development. Our proposal is to connect into the utilities in that location. We're still working for that due diligence to make sure that there's the necessary easements that we need to make that connection possible. Regarding stormwater, the site is less than an acre, and obviously, our disturbance will be less than an acre, so we are subject to follow the local requirements per the municipality. We don't need to follow any DEC requirements, but we will do so, working with the engineers here, to make sure that we provide the necessary information, to make sure our stormwater management system's appropriately sized per the village requirement, or per the town requirements. Just wanted to mention regarding lighting is that, you know, for, in New York State, there's some lighting requirements that we need to meet for security standards. Since we have an entrance to the bank that will be ADA accessible and that we have a drive-up ATM, you know, we anticipate adding lighting to meet those New York State requirements, and we'll do such in the subsequent submissions that we'll be seeing hopefully shortly. That's basically all I wanted to go forward with mentioning. I don't know, Dan, if you wanna, you know, we would like to just get some feedback and some comments on the, on the initial sketch plan.
So initial, just a glance, I noticed that you don't propose sidewalk in the front of the facility?
We will provide a connection to the DOT right-of-way.
And then a crosswalk, you know, from where the entrance is, and I don't see any, a place where you would have a garbage dumpster, like refuse removal?
If that's required by municipal code, that's something we'll consider. With, with all the new branches we've been proposing, the dumpster's not really necessary just because everything's paperless now. We can provide it if it's required. We have to look through the code to see if that's, if that's feasible, but, you know, if it's needed, we will provide one depending on the municipal requirements.
Do you think we did need to do it? Where would we put it?
We can use the bypass lane as the means for providing trash pickup, so somewhere in the rear of the facility. Obviously, you don't want it in the front yard, because we're on like a main street here, we don't, we want to make sure it's an interactive site as well. So we could potentially put it next to the quote-unquote "six" over there, where our six parking stalls are in the rear of the facility. We might have to shift some parking around, but we meet the requirements for parking substantially, so...
And then like overhang, so like if emergency egress to get through and around the site fully?
There is an overhead bar that Chase provides. We'll have to meet, we'll have to make sure that that's worked out with the, with the fire department here, or if they need to access the site. I mean, we're only about 80 feet or so from the right-of-way, so, and I know there's three lanes there, there's a shared turn lane, and then a eastbound and north, and, and westbound, excuse me, lane, but we'll be more than happy to obtain any comments and work with your department.
And then I don't see any delineated handicap parking. It's not, you know, it's not marked on here.
Yeah, the, the...
Is it?
Yeah, it's in the middle of the property on the eastern side.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see that, my glasses.
That would have been one of my comments, though, is I'd prefer not to have those spots where you have to cross the travelway into the building. So if you could put them towards the front, that might be easier.
Yeah, we can play around with the location, but the door that we're proposing is on the east side of the building, and due to ADA requirements, we have to make sure the path is the least, the shortest path of travel, thank you. But we can consider, you know, shifting it depending on the plan that we're proposing for the architect, with the architect.
Oh, so the entrance is on that side?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I apologize, okay.
Did you say this is a Chase Bank?
Correct.
So are you abandoning the building three doors down?
I think they're, they're moving.
Do they own that building down the street, or is that part of the, next to the post office? Okay, so you're, the intention is to move from one location to the other?
Apparently so, yes, we can...
Yeah, our, our client is not Chase. So Chase, our, our client can be leasing to Chase, so I suspect that Chase is leasing it at the front location also.
Understood. So it's gonna leave a vacant lot down, a couple doors down?
On the, on the bright side, I think traffic will be moving in and out a lot smoother than it does now next to the post office, because that can, that can get pretty ugly at times.
Very.
Plus, this is a nice one.
Is this the standard number of parking spaces you would provide for a branch like this? It seems like a lot.
It's, it is a little more than what, you know, Chase preferably would like to see. However, 30 is kind of like in their sweet spot. We've proposed more, to be honest with you. 14 and 15 per the requirement is too few. Their sweet spot's about 28 to 30, so this is right in that, in that region.
Have you given any thought to what the building design will be, what it will look like?
They have a prototypical building. We can share that in subsequent submissions, but we are obviously, you know, gonna follow however the board wants to move forward with the architectural design, colors, facade, et cetera, yeah.
Any other questions or comments by board members?
Is there any?
Yes, there's design guidelines, is that what you're gonna ask? There are design guidelines, and we actually have a, a design that we'd like you to consider, a type of design. I have a question with regards to, we're in the middle of the comprehensive planning process right now, and one of the big issues that's coming up is the connection of all the parking lots in the area, especially in Hopewell. I know this is not under your control necessarily, but I'm talking to the board here. We'd really like to see these, these sites connected where possible, particularly if there's going to be ultimately roundabouts at some point, because it makes it really difficult if you have to go in and then all the way down to turn around to come back. So we, at the very least, I think we should consider requiring some sort of, at the back end of the property, some sort of connection to what may be a future road that goes through that shopping plaza there and out to 82.
So like behind Anthony's Pizza there?
Correct. Or, or if it's possible even to get out the back and connect to the road somehow.
Okay, through that.
I just don't know how it will be designed in the future, what will happen, but we, for sure, we could approach the adjacent property owners and/or ask for some sort of easement or some sort of arrangement that, that could ultimately be a future access.
Other comments?
It's just gonna be a bank, right? No, no other, you're not proposing any mixed use or anything like that.
Any further comments or questions? I guess not. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is Anoteka Wine Bar.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
Sorry I missed you last time. Got the tenant here, Dan Takeout, owner, and our property manager. I'm David Russo, representing the landlord of the Heritage Plaza. So I watched the video of your previous meeting, and you had your, you know, plans that you reviewed, so we're basically just, since there wasn't a site plan, we made a site plan with parking spaces to accommodate the change of use for our, from the CPA office to the wine bar. So that's the purpose of being here. And our tenant wanted to make sure there wouldn't be any, you know, obstacles to going forward with the project based on parking and lighting. So it's that simple, basically. So I don't know if you still have these on hand or if any, any questions, but the engineer, engineer drew up parking, there's 24 spaces needed for what we're proposing for the change of use for the liquor store and the wine bar, retail flower shop, and there's 25 on the map with additional handicap spot. So I don't know, you know, if there was any, there was a little thing, a few things to clarify from the previous meeting. It's one deeded parcel, two tax parcels, so there's no need for any easements if we develop, you know, finish, fix up the rear for parking, which is not on this proposal. It's just all parking in the front. So does that ring a bell? So at this stage, I don't know if we're, I mean, we're, this is a first site plan for this site, you know, it goes back to the 60s, but I don't know if you have any other questions or...
There were several questions about the sidewalk, parking, and then the, the space between the two buildings, right? The post office and the, the building, right? And if there was plans to make that accessible for people, or cars, or seating, or whatever it might be. And then wasn't there a drainage question about something in the back?
Something in the back, yeah.
Okay. So the site plan for parking for the current tenants is just in the front. We don't have a plan at the moment for parking in the rear. There's a drainage solution, it's underway. We have our connections to the sewer done in August, so that's in place for the change of use to comply. And in the future, we expect to develop parking in the rear, but it's not on this, this plan for this proposal of the...
So the, I guess the question was, do they currently meet the parking requirements that are necessary to have this additional establishment there? I know that was a very small operation, right? I forget, how many potential occupants?
It's only open in evenings, and the occupancy is, I think, 19, around 30, maybe 29. So the numbers were, you know, 20, or 24 spaces required, and there's 25 on our plan.
Okay. An adequate handicap.
So I, I think this is the issue that you always get into with plazas, right? You have currently, they have a particular set of uses there. There's no way of knowing what ultimately those uses will become, right? You can't necessarily hold them responsible for that, but it's, it's, we know that there can be parking issues out there with regards to people wanting to park close to the restaurants. So I think there's some sharing of parking that just happens naturally from people, and I think there's just an overall level of concern about access to, to the rear, you know, and, and again, I know, understanding that it's, he's saying he's working on it. There's, you know, just a concern about the safety of that rear parking and people potentially parking back there and walking forward without...
Lighting and stuff of that nature.
Lighting and stuff like that. So as far as, I mean, I can address the, the number of spaces, you know, understanding that when the wine bar is open, the rest of the plaza is likely not going to be open. It's shared parking, that's appropriate, we've done that before. I think that, you know, I think from what I've heard the board say, the concern is if people are coming and parking in the back because they can't find parking up front, how are they getting from the back to, to the front safely?
So at the moment, there is no parking in the rear. I mean, people park back there, I've seen, can walk up to the post office. It's not striped, but for the purpose of what we think the occupancy effects will be, parking in the front should be enough as we see it. But there is a plan to develop that in the rear. As far as the, in between the buildings, there's lots of hopeful, wishful thinking that a restaurant will arrive and have an outdoor seating area in between the buildings, which kind of invites that opportunity, but that's not currently, you know, in reality, so... But the, there should not be, there will not be driving in between the buildings. A road will not be created in, in between the buildings, and...
I mean, then at some point, if we were just gonna allow this, we would have to then have them mark or, you know, barrier off that part of the property to be able to, because there's no way for you to say that somebody can't park there if the ability to go back there and park exists unless you remove it from them. So you put up some kind of barrier for them, like Jersey barrier, whatever it may be, to stop them from going back there, because I think one of the concerns is safety all the time, and with regards to that, then lighting coming up or a pathway for them to travel from those parked spaces up. So, I mean, there probably is some solution here based on the fact, if it's true, that there is enough parking, because the wine store, what are the hours of the wine, the actual, not the, the wine bar, the actual, there's a liquor store there, right? So would they close like before this other operation picks up, or are they...
Yeah, the hours are 10 to 7.
10 to 7 are the liquor store hours.
The liquor store hours. So when, when would the wine bar open up and then close?
6, 2, 10, or around that range.
So just like an hour of overlap?
And that's only in the accountant's office? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So what about then the third space that is the former flower shop? What's gonna be in there?
We don't have a, it's being renovated, and we do not know what's going to be.
Okay. Got it. I mean, so that may require some parking as well, depending on who the tenant is?
And I assume the process is when the time comes, we'll present the plan.
Come to us again, okay?
My agenda is to renovate our rear for, to solve the drainage problems, and that's happening now. We removed a 1,000-gallon old oil tank a couple weeks ago, made a path for my drainage to work, and now we're working on the rear drainage solution.
Okay.
We're a bit on the fence with observing how the traffic flow will change when these proposed roundabouts are put into place, and Route 82 has proposed a change to be right-hand turn only. This is the, this is what I hear is going to happen from the state. I don't hear anything against that, which I believe will change the traffic pattern of our plaza, and cars will be going to the rear. So I hear the, the need to open up parking lots to make it easier for folks to get around, but before we make a plan or decide what the right thing to do, we're waiting to see how things develop a little bit. But it is shared parking, we can't, you know, our plaza next door, people park, and... We can't, you know, our plaza next door, people park and...
Is there any, like, anybody with animosity, like your neighboring building owners? Is there any issues that have come about in the past, or...
How far in the past are we talking?
Well, let's just say more recently, over the last three to five years.
In my participation with my family's plaza, there hasn't been, you know, it's been, become harmonious.
Okay.
So, we're working together. There is an easement, an engineer proposal for drainage in the rear.
Yeah.
Which is a, is a partner, would be connecting to our neighbor's plaza, but that's not approved at the moment until we see what happens with the town ownership of the road behind us and other surface water drainage options that may present themselves. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if I may, so normally, right, if you're seeing this as if it was new construction, you would never allow what's happening behind the plaza to be happening. That wouldn't occur because you would never design the plaza to function like that. This is an old plaza that's been functioning for a long, long time, or been somewhat functioning for a long, long time from, behind the building. So, we've got a bit of an issue because we have a use that wants to come in that I think would be a very beneficial use to the town, and I think for the most part, folks would enjoy having a wine bar in that location. And we have a, you know, a property that's older and is in the process of being renovated. And I'm looking at Matt and the fire guys right now as far as code issues. Are there any specific code issues that we would need to address with regards to the back area at all?
Talking about barriers, it'd have to be something that we would still have access. So, like a Jersey barrier is no good. A gate with a lock on it, we can do, but it has to be something...
I'm just saying something to restrict somebody from going back there. That obviously would have a control issue, you know, control...
What's the lighting back there at night? Is there lighting on the building?
Very little.
No, in the rear, there's very little lighting.
Yeah, none.
I'm just, you know, somebody that doesn't know that it drops off, that it could be an issue. I don't know, I mean, if there's just, if it's something we can...
I mean, we can come up with some reasonable solution that wouldn't cost a fortune, obviously, because this is, I think, something that's beneficial to the town, but at the same token, if we could just come up, maybe through talking to fire advisory, or they could come up with some sort of solution, Scott, the engineer, you know, like, that would be functional for everybody to be able to allow.
We have a grassy zone in the rear of the building that's a sort of dip, and I'm not sure if that's the fear that you have, people walking into that.
I don't know if it's even just walking, but also someone driving back there that's not familiar.
Just driving off.
It's uneven now. And I was at the post office this week, and a car came up through there, too, from the back.
That's the area with the barrels there, is that...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So, cars go through there all the time, yeah.
So, that's...
We gotta, we gotta address that, I think.
Those barriers have been there, blocking traffic, and it was opened up for access for renovations and things, and it's a sort of ad hoc traffic study to see how people behave, but those barriers can be put back to stop that. But it's interesting to see how people want to get, you know, to the front.
Yeah, to the front, yeah.
But those temporary barriers have been there, I think, previously, to prevent people from driving in that dirt zone. Now that the sewer system is connected, I think there's, there's fear, but there still remains this grassy dip. So, would a proposed, you know, wooden barrier in the grass be something that would be affordable and easy to prevent people from going from the asphalt into the grass?
Where's the property line between the two buildings?
There is no property line. There's all one big deeded parcel between the post office and the flower shop.
I mean, and we all, we speak from the standpoint of knowing the site. You get somebody that's from out of town, comes in, and like I just say, you know, driving awry down there, just, there's got to be some type of, I'm sure there's a solution here, you know, and reasonable solution.
When we discuss, well, if there was an outdoor cafe there, we would want to have some type of bollards or something there, but that's, we're getting ahead of ourselves with that. At this point, there isn't any outdoor cafe, so...
I think it's just more from the standpoint of them parking down there and actually driving into the undesigned area. Like I said, just being unknown to the current condition, as we, most of us, I believe, are. And so, like I said, there's got to be a reasonable solution that we could come up with that...
Is there a functional back door to the wine bar, or is it pure...
No.
No, there won't be, no.
No.
Probably only have 29 people.
Yeah.
So, for the purpose of being here, we just want to inform our tenant whether they have confidence to move forward with their application, their building permits, based on this parking plan and the change of use. That's really, I don't think there's a big approval that we're seeking at this juncture, but these issues of the transition of this aging plaza to the modern age is good, so it's good to get the feedback and plan ahead for the rear development, but...
I think if you can address the concerns that the Rich has expressed, and I'm sure he's right, that there's a reasonable and inexpensive solution to that that would also satisfy our fire advisory board and everything. I think in general, my sense is of the board, and I'm going to ask the rest of the board members to speak up, but I think our sense is, is that we think it's an attractive use that you're considering, and I think that the parking situation in front is efficient at this time. If anybody disagrees, please speak up. I think, I think we'd like to see this continue.
Do you own where the sidewalk ends and there's the street, street through, between Dunkin' Donuts and the plaza, or is that theirs?
Nope, the, between Dunkin' Donuts and the Vino Vin Liquor Store, that alley, is that what you referred to?
Yeah.
Nope, that is the, basically the edge of the, our building is the popular.
Got it, okay.
So, we'd encourage you to continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate your help.
So, the next item on the agenda is Onera.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, as those are being handed, we actually had a PowerPoint presentation to provide you tonight. That is your...
Thank you.
That is your PowerPoint presentation in your hands. Went back to the office and made a few extra, a few extra copies. So, good evening. This proposal, not the same proposal, but I understand the board saw something like this a couple of months ago, maybe it was a year ago or so. Briefly, the property is actually the old Monte Cristo restaurant up on a hill. I remember growing up and going to a couple of game dinners up there. That's kind of what they catered to back in the day. Part of the old restaurant is there, and the hotel areas and so forth are there. The area, the restaurant location, although it's not operating as a restaurant now, it's all, it's all still up there, but not to the degree of maintenance that it was back in the day. Tonight, we have John Cole and Scott Hernandez, as long as some other representatives from Onera here tonight, to, they're going to go over the pamphlet with you and kind of give you some background in terms of what they do and what they're looking to do, and, you know, try to get some feedback. We are before you tonight under a sketch plan proviso, so certainly some impact, some feedback from the board is really what we're looking for tonight. Just before I get started, I will note that the previous proposal that came before you apparently indicated the campsites having units that were on wheels. That's not proposed here. We're looking at about 50 units located throughout the property, which is actually about 86 acres and change, and they would be permanent structures assembled on each of these spots, these camping areas. The term that they're using now, which I'm sure you heard before, is this clamping, right? Glamorous type camping. There's nothing specific within the code itself that calls out clamping, but we do have, we do have camping, and we have large-scale recreation. And then there's actually a provision, too, related to hotels and motels, which maybe somehow we fit into, but I guess we can discuss that as we move further along. I do see that it's on the agenda tonight for large-scale recreation. So, Onera, who is, who is looking to move this forward, they actually have existing facilities like this throughout the country, one in Texas, California, and some other spot areas throughout the country. As I think I mentioned, I'll stick to the, to the engineering aspect of it while they can go ahead and bring you through that pamphlet. I mentioned 50 proposed units. Water is up on the mountain, so we have to get wells. We're not going to get any kind of extension of water mains to get up there. Sewage would be on-site, okay? There are some existing sewage facilities on-site that were there for the restaurant and the hotels that are up there, but everything certainly would be on-site. I had the pleasure of walking the property, I want to say about a week and a half, two weeks ago. There is some steep slopes. There are some wetlands. There's some very unique geological features, and we were kind of, as we were walking through in terms of where these units would be placed and so forth, it's a unique opportunity and a unique location. I also do want to note that this property sits right on the southern edge of East Fish Grill, and then you have the Town of Kent, which is the property just south of us. Access would be through Long Hill Road, and if anybody's taken Long Hill Road each way, it's a bit of a rough run. That being said, the Town of Kent helped us out, and that road is not completely paved. I was very surprised at seeing that. I know that there was a lot of issues regarding drainage, and there's a lot of steep areas and so forth, but I think that was a plus at least we saw on our end relative to be able to gain access to this particular site. Just getting back to the wetlands issue, you know, we did, we did take a look at the overall map. This actually shows up as a federal or a town wetland, but there is a pretty strong connection on the north side to an existing state wetland, so we're going to arrange to get the state up there, take a look at it, see if they, they may end up taking this one as state, and we'll have to deal with them relative to the 100-foot buffers and things such as that. It gets a little scary. There's a lot of existing trails that run through the property, because it was at once also provided for camping areas, but these areas, these driveways and so forth are actually, a lot of them are within the 100-foot buffer. So, depending on, again, whether it's DEC or so forth, we're going to have to have a discussion with them, because I know that access was discussed. We did, we did sneak and take a look at the previous meeting minutes and take a look at the videos to try and get that input, you know, relative to this proposal. So, certainly, access and emergency access is going to be important to get to, you know, these particular sites, so that's something we'll have to talk about further on, too. But, but again, I don't want to belabor on, I'm going to let one of the guys take it, kind of take you through the submittal, so you get a feel from them what they are, what they're proposing, and then maybe at the end, we can take a couple of extra questions and see, see where we go. Makes sense?
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for taking the time. I'm here with my head of construction, Nick Salmon, so we're going to take you through this presentation. The goal really is to just go through the presentation, answer your questions, teach you a little bit about Onera, teach you a little bit about what we used to do or what we're doing now, and then the proposed, the site, where we're actually, the intended use. So, just quickly about Onera, we're about seven years old. We like to build immersive experiences, hospitality experiences. Currently have two hotels in operation. One of them is a traditional hotel. One of them is a landscape hotel, which is very similar to what we're going to want to be building at 17 Monte Cristo. So, if you turn to the first page here, you're going to see some pictures of our property in Fredericksburg, Texas. When we're, when we're building these properties, we like to focus on high design and architecture that's very important to us, also sustainability in terms of building materials and system operations. And you can see here, this one, we like to think we built this very architecturally sound. So, this one is in Fredericksburg, Texas, about 30 minutes, 45 minutes south of Austin, Texas. And all these units, they have HVAC, electricity, plumbing, water. It's very similar to what we want to be putting up at 17 Monte Cristo. And again, if you guys have questions, please interrupt me. This is supposed to be more of a conversation. So, if you have any questions, go ahead and stop me throughout the presentation. If you turn the page, this is, these are more pictures of the units that we have in Fredericksburg. A little bit about the density, we like to keep the density to about two units per acre, so one per half acre, so they're not really on top of each other. We want to, our number one goal is to connect our guests with nature, so that's what we're trying to do here, is what we want to do in 17 Monte Cristo as well. Turn the page again, we have some more units. This is one of our most popular units, the Spyglass. This one's vaulted up. It's a one-bedroom unit. So, we're on page four.
Apologies, we were preparing to do a slideshow, so Mike helped us out, and so a couple of you have non-double-sided units. There's a couple, there's two sets of presentations out there. I apologize if you're trying to follow along and you're scratching your head.
I'll try to make this quick, because I know you guys have been, been here all night. So, we have two different units here. The first page is the Spyglass. It's a vaulted unit, one bedroom, and then we have on the next page, a Monarch Treehouse, which you can see various stages of development here. This one's stick-built. Most of them are prefabricated, though. And then if you turn the page again, this is a project that we're finishing up in July in Wimberley, Texas, which is about 30 minutes due west of Austin. So, again, here, the focus is on nature, sustainability, and connecting our guests with that whole experience. Now, towards Monte Cristo, which is the intended use. Just like Mike said, thanks for all the information, Mike. We want to build around 50 units, permanent units on the site. These are all going to be connected to a shared well system and a shared septic system. There are some existing facilities on-site, but we do plan on potentially having to upgrade those systems for the, for the additional use. The 50 units will be about 20,000 square feet of construction and about 400 average square feet per unit. They're going to be somewhere between 230 and 1,000 square feet, depending on the units. So, we're going to have three different units, which are going to be almost identical to the ones you've seen in this presentation, one-bedroom units, ADA versions of those units, and then two-bedroom units with ADA versions of those units as well.
What's the maximum occupancy for each type of unit, the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom?
The one-bedroom, two people.
Two.
And the two-bedroom would be four people.
Okay.
And what's the average stay?
The average stay, if you guys turn one more page, you'll see I have all these, these stats. And these are stats on Fredericksburg, as well as our other locations, but we envision seeing the same stats.
You might have to share it in the floor here.
Yeah. This page here, it looks like most people got it. So, the average, like the state answered your question, somewhere between two and three days during the week. We intend on seeing people one to two days during the weekend. On the weekends, it might be a two-to-three-day stay. Holiday weekends might be a three-day stay. So, on average, about 2.7, we're somewhere between two to three days intended stay. And then on the average guests, one between one and two, depending on the room type, we usually have an 80% one-bedroom units and then a 20% two-bedroom units. So, one to two people is usually the average per room.
So, you will have like a reception area, like how do you, how do you receive a guest? How do they get to their room, you know, their space, and how does that operate?
Yeah, John, you want to take that question?
Yeah, normally we try to let, normally try to let, I'm John Cole, I'm the CEO of Onera. And we try to let people experience nature in themselves. There are always people on-site. We have people that, in our other locations, that live on-site, help someone to their room, et cetera. And they check in, either drive up to the unit, or they'll take a wagon or a golf cart to their unit and check in. They'll be given a code beforehand. Typically, there's no key access. You're given the code, and you check in with your ID all through digitally, and...
Yeah, we'll also have someone on-site, 24/7 security, so that person usually helps with checking as well. On occupancy, we're expecting about 80% occupancy, and that's, that's due to in the middle of the week being a little bit lower, and the weekends being a little bit higher, and then peak season, we'll have more people during peak season, a little bit less during the shoulder and the off-seasons.
So, do you consider peak, like the fall would be here, you think?
June to September is what, is what, the majority, that's peak season. But again, we intend on being open year-round. We'll just have lower occupancy during winter, winter seasons. seasons. We, we have a slide here on sustainability. Nick, do you want to talk a little bit about the sustainability?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Nick Sammons. I'm the head of construction. I have a background in sustainable development and ecological land use. The unit mix that we're working with, it's kind of a hybrid of prefabrication and panelization and then a combination of site development. All of these units, we've been working with our prefab builders to, to lower the, the overall weight. Ideally, we like to work with helical pile or ground anchor foundations, completely eliminating the need for concrete. I like this from an embodied carbon perspective, but it's also really, it's a, it's a lower kind of, any kind of ecological disturbance is you can actually reduce that by, you don't need to get big trucks back there. The, the panelization of these structures, they can, their max weight is about 350 pounds, can be moved by two people. All of our structures will be built on kind of a subfloor deck above ground. So that, that really kind of eliminates a lot of kind of costs. It also shortens the, the build time. The, the construction that we're using is a light gauge steel frame, zero-waste construction. So it eliminates a lot of the, the kind of onsite waste costs. It also is a recyclable product at its, at its kind of lifetime end. So it can be recycled and put back into the material stream. All the woods that we're using are sustainably harvested. They're also going through a non-chemical treatment process with a 25-plus-year lifetime. So eliminates any kind of toxic chemicals that could be leaching into the, to the ecology. We're also working with our partners to shift to a recycled denim bat insulation. Again, another non-chemical-free product. It's very ecological, actually, you know, taking, it's often, often like kind of waste from, from the fabric and fashion industry that gets upcycled into insulation. We use everything as Energy Star-approved appliances, so just reducing overall energy draw and also low-flow and kind of toilets and other water systems. And we have been on, a number of our sites, we're doing an actual exploration into microsolar and PV thermal heating. So that, that's to be determined on this one, but we, we'd like to, to take as much of our properties off-grid as possible. So those are some of the kind of key design elements, the actual structures. We also just, in general, you know, with this site and Mike brought it up, we would love to use the existing roads. There's, there's a lot of existing road infrastructure. We do have some questions around some of those roads going through wetland, that kind of 100-foot barrier. There's a lot of beautiful trails there. So we would like to keep this site as intact as possible, having to do as little kind of clearing or any kind of disturbance of the land. Again, I think, you know, walking the site, probably very minimal tree clearance as well. Our, our structures have a pretty small footprint and again, with this helical pile, kind of light foundation work, we don't have to bring in heavy equipment and do kind of large concrete course. Something that gives you a better overview, yeah.
All right. So we have some, we have some maps here on for you guys. I think you know exactly where the parcel is, but these are just showing a little bit more where the location is. About, from here, we're about 16 minutes south of this location. The slide that I want to take to you next is, is the previous to you. So I think, I think Mike mentioned it used to be a hotel restaurant. So on that site, it wa- there was nine bathrooms that were currently used as well as actual hotel rooms. We saw history from 1920s until the last was about 2010 when that, when that was in, in use. And after that, Shane's been, been running his Mountain Scout lounges, the survival lounge there for the last couple of years. So Shane's the current owner of the property. Yeah, please?
Hi, Shane Hobel. We wanted as a, a landing base for our school, but I get called out across the country and service. It's just been a landing point for us and very grateful for this, this group. Just to let you know, I don't know if you folks are aware, but the Appalachian Trail is in the backyard, if you, if you know that. And it's buffed up against about 500, 600 state land acres. On, just on the other side of the very, the very south end of Duchess and then where it meets Kent, on that side, there's a nature preserve on that side as well. You have buffering all the way around this property.
Is there an intent to connect it to the AT somehow directly to the, from the property?
There's two connections. Right at the bottom of the valley there, right down by Horton Town Road, Long Hill hits it in Horton Town, you've got one of the Appalachian Trail houses where you can go in and, you can door dash there. So right at the very top of the trail before it crosses over to the power line, there's a beautiful flat access that is about 100 feet, literally from the very top corner of this property to the Appalachian Trail. The secondary access is just right out the driveway and straight up to the very peak of the road. And you've got that parking spot there, yeah.
Yes, so this on, on the next page here, we just wanted to mention some of the things that we're, we're, we're looking at. In particular, fire safety. So making sure that all of the emergency vehicles and, and fire trucks can get up to, to the proposed locations. So we, we wanted to just make sure, we're going to try and make these, work with you guys to make sure the roads are accessible for, for all the emergency vehicles. I think we talked a little bit about the, the existing septic. We have a little bit of work to do to see what, what exactly needs to be done in order to bring it up to, to 50 units, but there's some existing septic there with, with, with the thought that we will have to, we'll make it larger. There's also some existing wells with about 60 gallons per minute. That's, that's the rating that we see right now. We think that might be sufficient, but we, we will, we'll make it bigger if we need to. So those are all things we're working on. And then the next slide is just on security and guest check-in. These are two pictures of our, the gates that we have at our other properties. Security is important to us and, and we do intend on putting a gate in the front and keeping the entire, the entire property gated in. And now the next couple of slides are some more pictures of, of the proposed site and the site layout, which is right up here. So the site layout, as we have, that's 50 units on the, on this, on this page here. It's, they're put around the natural trails that, that currently exist. And the issues that we are working with are just to make sure that they're, they're, they're up to code for, for fire safety and then dealing with the wetlands as well. So all of that stuff is, are things that we're thinking about as we, as we prepare the site layout. And, and that's about it. So we'd love to hear your questions. What we really want to know is, is if, if we go through all these, making sure we have the access and we make sure that the delineations are, are proper, that this is something that you guys find interesting and, and find in line with, with the, with the town planning codes. And so that's what we're really looking for today.
Interesting. Questions or comments from board members?
Um, one of the last pages that has the, well, I think we're looking at that. Are these, the little dots, are those proposed sites?
Yes, those are, those are the proposed units. And then again, as long as we can maintain the, the fire safety and make sure that we're avoiding wetlands, then that's, that's where we'd like to stick the units.
How do you access them? Do you drive a car, golf cart? You just mentioned something about like a golf cart for each one. Is there like a central parking and then you kind of golf cart out?
Yeah, so you want to take that, Nick?
With the current road conditions, I think what we would like to actually see happen is, is to reduce car traffic and have a, a parking lot with golf cart access. So these are lighter trails and people would have golf carts to them and that, that maintains kind of the more natural feel of the property. I think that's, that is a standing question in terms of what is required for access. And obviously, we would be taking, you know, guidance from you guys on that. And what is needed to make sure that we're balancing both the kind of harmonic feel of being in nature and immersing our, our guests into nature and also ensuring that the town, the fire marshal and, and emergency services feel comfortable that they can actually access these structures. So that is a question to, you know, to be determined.
And you said there was a, would be caretaker or security onsite 24/7. Is that the buildings kind of towards the front entrance? Are they existing buildings or would you be building?
We would, we would either build a residence for, for the person who'd be living there year-round or one of those existing buildings. What are the two? But there would be someone there, living there full, full-time.
So you mentioned several times that this is at the border of East Fishkill and Kent. So will this require that you go to Kent as well? If you move forward, will it require Kent approvals?
None of the property, it's...
It's all in our, it's all in our jurisdiction.
It is, okay.
I believe, right?
So there is one little tiny piece of parcel that is right on the other side of the road. If you notice, right at the gate, there's an archway. And that little section of the peninsula road on the other side is the Duchess Line. So it has nothing to do with the main body of the property, yeah.
As part of referrals under the general municipal law, it cannot be notified anyway.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll be aware of what's going on.
Understood.
Nothing, nothing has happened on that sliver, but yes, I would think that this board, once we start the process, would be the lead agent. But we would have a certain...
I know generally, you mentioned fire stuff, everybody comes to us with fire concerns and trucks and stuff. For something like this, my larger concern would be rescue, non-moral calls like that, regarding, you know, what you have on site to mitigate calls for, you know, smaller in nature. You know, and obviously, you bring people up in the city, they go to the Appalachian Trail, they decide to go for a hike, but they're in sneakers or risking, you know, lost hikers, twisted ankles, things like that. You know, whatever you can bear in mind as you go forward with this to mitigate those kinds of calls that really would up our rescue. Because then we're worrying about not only getting onto the property with the vehicle, but getting out into the woods with a smaller vehicle, trying to find someone or move them out of the woods in that regard, so.
Definitely, yeah. No, we would, we'd be working very carefully with you guys to make sure that that was all in line.
Do your guests tend to stay onsite their entire stay or do they go back and forth into the...
Yeah, I think that they're going to be sleeping onsite. There might be some activities onsite, but they'll probably be doing some hiking. And there's, we don't have any food and beverage onsite, so we'd be recommending local restaurants and bars for them to go in the evenings. Sometimes we'll, we might stock their fridge for them, but most of the time they go offsite into town to, to visit the restaurants and, and enjoy the town.
You said you would be open year-round. You're not proposing a road system. How would you do snow clearing to be able to access units during the winter?
So the, you, the question was around the road system. So we, there are existing pathways there and we probably have gravel, gravel pathways to make sure that we can get there and then ensuring that the fire safety can, can access everything. And we'll make the roads as big as we need to. But I think with that, yeah, we would, we would access it the same way anyone else would, either with a golf cart or a car.
So currently they're, they're like logging roads and trail would be seen a little bit smaller. They're actually logging roads, little access roads. There was a hunting lodge up there years and years and years ago. So they had access roads all over the place there. Currently, I, I snow blow and I use a plow, but I'm able to clear these roads all the way through, yeah.
I think it's worth noting too, just when you raised this question, I think a lot of, a lot of this is addressed with the staff that we're having onsite. And we, we really love Shane, what he offers and what he's training. We are still exploring how that partnership works, but this man, if you haven't gone and done your wilderness training, that he knows everything about survival and land. We were looking at actually building that into potential amenity for that. I think he would be still homebasing there as well for, for a minute. And then our staff there would be multi-trained, trained, you know, for facilities management as well as, you know, addressing some of the first aid and CPR concern as well, yeah.
Yeah, and I think just on, on safety, I think Shane's, Shane's been operating for, he hasn't had one issue with his survival in terms of safety.
I, I currently, I own, operate Mountain Scout Survival School. I belong to the National Track and Search and Forensic Investigation Team. There are five of us in the country. I'm the only one in New York State or in this quadrant of the United States. I get called out to teach Alphabet City, Operations Individuals, Tier One and Tier Two Individuals, that would be Special Forces Individuals. I currently am an investigator for one of the premier investigation security firms here in the Hudson Valley. I also run and operate safety concerns in terms of recreational. I guide camps and other municipalities in terms of outdoor rec, in terms of even looking at parks, knowing eye level is stab level, looking at child safety all the way up to adult and corporate and kids in between. So my background is huge. It's 40 years here in the Hudson Valley, teaching high-end wilderness survival for numerous departments, from scenic Hudson, OSI, even Central Park and beyond. So that's my background. And we were going to do something here, but I'm glad these guys are here because there is a future relationship that we can do here and we can certainly address any of those recreational needs. Anybody that's in recreational that does go to any facilities, they end up signing a waiver anyway. There are absolute rules that have to apply, be it, you know, at your day camp and/or any of these facilities. And any campground you go to, they have rules. You can't climb a tree. You're not going to be chopping trees down. There, there's ecology and liability issues and those are my backgrounds and that's going to be, yeah, the tight rope that I'm going to have around. But that's the way we control it, for both ecology and the safety and for liability and safety of others, yeah.
Can we just lastly, because we haven't specifically mentioned it, but just the amenities. We are planning to have a, a pool as well as saunas onsite. There will be the trail use. And we have been exploring kind of what would be the most appropriate way to tie into the Appalachian Trail. I mean, I've been researching, this would probably be one of the nicest places along the trail for people to stay. There's actually been a lot of forums on how to, how to loved ones come and connect with people on the trail when they're passing through. So we're still exploring how that exactly works and how, you know, we'd be working out with, you know, the trail as well. And, but that would be something that we were actually really excited about with this site, is that, that connection to it. And then maybe inviting people to actually slow down and stop here. I think there's, we're just on one side of the, the only kind of structures for, for stay and kind of a pretty large swath. So it'd be nice to see more of those, you know, through hikers actually start to stay and, and enjoy East Fishkill.
Other questions or comments, board members or professionals?
I mean, I, I think the biggest issue here, we've had these types of applications before, slightly different. And, and in the past, it's been, I think I spoke with you guys on the phone, it's, it's been emergency access. And then also, I would just say, because we don't necessarily have this type of use in the code, it would be classifying this use. It's not a seasonal use, it's a year-round use. Are these ultimately, do they ultimately get looked at as houses by the Health Department? I'm not sure how they do that. It would be interesting to know in the other locations that you've worked, how they've classified the uses and what, what they've done. And if you could provide us with some of that information, that'd be great. Because I don't know how, you mean, the large-scale recreation development special permits really for camps. And this is almost more of like a...
Permanent structure.
Permanent structure, hotel.
Sure.
And, and with that, what that entails as far as Health Department and, and emergency access and all that kind of stuff. So if you could give us any information that you have, that would be great. We can do a little bit of research on our end as well.
Great. Yeah, and in terms of the hotel motel, we, we really wanted to come, come to you all and, and just seek what, what is the best way to approach the planning, whether it be hotel or motel or large-scale recreational. We really just wanted to, either, either way works for us, but we wanted to show you what, what the plans are and kind of get your feedback on, on what you think the best way to get this approved is.
In Texas, we're considered hotel commercial property. We're under, if we're doing a project in Zion National Park right now, which would be considered a campground, it really is, was the easiest for the jurisdiction. We're more flexible than anything else.
But with that become, comes the building code issues. So that's something that we've got to look at.
And that's probably something your engineer, Michael, would speak to the Health Department about sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we're, we're starting all those conversations. I think, you know, as we've started to understand with the code, I think one of the things, the large-scale use, there's different setback requirements as well. So we're, we're coming here, you know, really looking for your guidance and to be a good partner in, in all of this.
Would this be something you'd do on a phased basis, by the way?
John, you want to...
Kind of build from the bottom of the hill up or something?
Yeah, I mean, we typically like to for a lot of different reasons. I mean, I was just talking about entrance reasons, building phases. We're open to it. It really is going to be a determination made by Nick and our, our GC in terms of how we proceed and I guess the feedback that we get from you guys as we walk into the project.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, and I, the only other comment I would have is that depending on how we classify the use, there could have to be a zoning change to this because certain uses are not.
Which would require town board?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
How is it zoned right now?
It's residential zoned right now. So like a hotel motel would be an issue, right? If that's how we classify as a use unless they get some sort of...
Is that, I, we've kind of looked at those, that your options isn't, I, I thought we saw for, it's R3 officially, but...
It's R3, okay.
R2.
It's R2, isn't it?
Hotel motel would be a special use permit within that particular zone. I thought that's what we saw.
Well, I'll check for you.
Yeah, let's just verify.
I'll check for you.
And Michael, special use as camping or as hotel?
Hotel.
As hotel. Is it special use for both? It's a special use for both, but it's obviously separate. Like Michael, both, special permit over here for hotel motel, special permit here for large-scale recreation.
Okay.
So, got to filter that out. But I'll, the discussion with the Health Department may play into the decision which way it goes.
Okay.
And then I'd also like to know what happens at the end of use? Like, in other words, if you, 10 years from now decide that this is no longer going to happen, what happens to all the structures? That kind of thing, if you have any information on that or have any thoughts about that? You can provide that, you don't have to talk about it now, but I'm just curious, because what we've had happen with bungalow camps, for example, is they, they're turning into permanent, permanent homes, many times illegally, right? So we'd have to have some sort of understanding of how that works.
We're the only institutional operator of these sort of new landscape hotels in the country. Our partner is a top 10 hospitality REIT. We are the only exited property. We, we own the only and develop the only exited property in this space, which still operates as a hotel. It's owned by a company that owns 1,000 hotels across the country, 1,000, maybe it's 100, quote me on that. We anticipate this to be the finest of its category, that it will be able to be operated for the use that we intend it for many years to come. This is not, all these units have HVAC heating. Normally, we have private hot tubs. It is, you know, a truly a landscape hotel, and it's going to be a beautiful architected piece that we think will have a life way beyond what I can envision, but I'm really excited to be operating here.
But I guess the, the real question is, if it didn't, and it came to some sort of end, I think the question is, they could become, like, people could go up there and start living in these structures and, you know, have become a permanent resident. You know what I mean? So.
We just have to be careful that what it.
I understand that completely.
It's not us, but you understand where I'm going.
Yeah, that's a major concern.
But it's still privately owned property, just.
It would still be privately owned, and I think a lot of things, as far as, as far as, as far as tenancy rights, if you're limiting people on their stay and you're the landlord, I think that's a way to avoid some of those issues.
It depends on how it's classified though.
Seven-night maximum for staying.
Right, right. It's a seven-night maximum for staying, so I think.
If it's a motel hotel, it is, there's a requirement of that, but if it's not, if it's a large-scale development camp, then it's, then it could be something different.
Well, I think, right, I think they're just saying that they, they want to limit to seven nights anyway, so that's, it'll be on them to police their own sort of private property if, if this goes all the way to the end.
Okay.
From the building perspective, I mean, with the prefab mix, I think many units could actually be taken off and repurposed somewhere else with that, like, less intrusive foundation. So there is potential for actually recouping the actual built infrastructure and moving it somewhere else if, if, heaven forbid, and that's not our intention, that this does not become as successful as our other units have.
And if they reach end of life, the majority of the materials are recyclable regardless?
Yes, so that's why this, the light steel framing is completely recyclable, that denim bad is, could, I can imagine being composted or reused, the wood, the majority of the wood is going to, to be completely toxic-free. So, and then, you know, we use standing seam metal roofing. All that can, can be repurposed or recycled.
Okay, well, thank you very much for an interesting presentation. Good luck in your next steps, and we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the final item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Logistics Center?
So I can, I can go through this pretty quickly. The Hudson Valley Logistics Center is, has come to us to request amended site plan approval for two things. One is that they want to put an additional monument sign to show where the emergency access is, which I think is a reasonable request, and then the other is to replace, I guess they had some excess material on the site, and they also had a very large sound wall that was proposed from the corner of 52 and Patriot Way that kind of wrapped around where the sidewalk is heading down, and there was going to be, there's a retaining wall, and then there's going to be a sound wall on top of the retaining wall, in part to prevent noise from the trucks from hitting the school. The idea was that, because there was excess material, that we could actually remove that sound wall and instead do an actual berm with landscaping there, just for visual purposes. So they're requesting that we approve, the site plan to remove the sound wall and put a berm there instead with landscaping. And we have a, currently a landscape architect looking at the landscaping to decide what is appropriate for planting, and the condition of the resolution, if you choose to approve this amended site plan, would be that they would work with the landscape architect to finalize that landscape plan at the top of the berm.
Has the school been notified that the wall might not go up?
I don't, I don't know. I have no idea.
The berm have the same effect as the sound wall?
I, I'm assuming, but I don't know.
That would take a long time, because the plant, I mean, depending on how they plant, I mean, the wall.
Well, I think the berm is supposed to go as high as the wall went, basically. It's, because what they're doing is they're.
It's a long 52 there, but it's pretty big.
There's a, there's a lower retaining wall that they're making slightly higher, so where the sidewalk is, that wall's getting a little higher, and then they're actually berming on top of that wall where the sound wall would have been. So I think they're trying to replace the entire height of the sound wall with the berm, and then planting's on top of that. And it was to soften the appearance of it, because the sound wall looked pretty urban.
But these, these pictures they've submitted don't do it justice.
They don't. In fact, they aren't, aren't correct, and that's why you'll see one of the conditions in the, it was written in such a way as to describe that, because the, the rendering isn't quite right.
Yeah, because if you see this, this wall kind of visually shows that it almost is covering 50% of that corner.
Correct.
And then when you go to the planted side, that whole thing is almost exposed.
Correct, and that's why the conditions are written the way it is.
Yeah, I think we need something that really gives us a better assessment of that this will be comparable change.
Well, I think what, the landscape architect is supposed to actually do that review for us and submit.
Yeah, she's doing, they are doing that review for us, yeah.
So, and they'll submit that to our planner and determine if that's acceptable?
With the revised, you know, rendering of what it'll, and the end position will look like, only because that doesn't, it really leaves a lot of ambiguity there between the two, you know, two things, a significant difference.
I mean, you can, you can kind of see, what they messed up in this rendering is you can kind of see that the bottom retaining wall is higher in the sound wall removal, but what they don't show is that the berm is higher on the building.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, they didn't, and we noticed that immediately as well, yeah.
I'm going to agree with Lori, I think that we need to physically understand that to see that visually.
Yeah, something to scale that just shows that it's comparable with the revised planting.
Yeah, I haven't been interacting with the applicant, it's been scott largely, so.
So how important is it that this get approved tonight as opposed to at the next meeting with revised schematics?
I'm not personally aware of any urgent.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah.
I mean, I, I think probably, I haven't actually been through the resolution, but I'm sure you drafted it in such a way that it gives us plenty of protections with regards to your landscape architect's recommendations, right?
Yeah.
But again, we're being asked to approve something that we physically can't really understand.
We're actually being given a drawing that shows that it's not comparable.
There we go, okay. All right, so if, if you think we can wait until the next meeting with proper drawings?
I don't really know.
This is a board's call. There's no representative from the applicant here tonight to state that it's, you know, a very urgent matter, so I think, you know, this board has a lot of deference on, wants to review it.
All right, well, then for a re, a redo, we will, we'll delay action on it.
Accurate drawings.
Fair enough. Okay.
Is the signage shown only?
Or just do it all later?
Are they trying to put the sign in right away?
Wanted to get it added. I mean, if we could add at least the signage, that way I can approve the permit.
Okay, so we can do, well, I could, what I can do is we can just strike all the things related to the wall and just go with the signage, because what I've done is I've.
They just want to add one more monument.
So I can do the resolution and just keep anything related to the, to the signage and strike everything related to the retaining wall.
And basically, the monument sign they're going to add is no different than what they already have existing on their plan?
Correct.
I would be.
And it's, and it's really wayfinding, and it also, to, also is designed to say for emergency access only, it's the road coming in from 52 on the westerly end.
Yeah, but it's no significant
No.
Different piece of monument.
Same, same look.
Okay, that's.
So it looks like the first three whereas paragraphs would survive as well as a portion of the last one? If we want to limit this to.
Yeah, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, I'm going to give you some language, so instead of where it says be further resolved, shown on the attached conceptual plan, I was actually going to add this anyway. So we'll get rid of all, anything referencing the conceptual plan, and we'll just say on the H, on the Hudson Valley Logistics Center site plan with site signage, because they've actually provided us a plan with a site signage prepared by Lang and Engineering, and I'll put that language in and scratch the stuff with regards to the sound wall. So I'll just turn this resolution into a sign resolution only, amended to the sign location. And then we'll have to do another one for the, the sound wall.
Okay.
Fair enough.
And you want, you want to approve the sign this evening? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, apparently they have a sign application into the Building Department right now, so until they get the approved location on the site plan, we can't approve the, the sign permit application.
Do we need to do that by resolution, or can we do the sign piece by?
Let's do it by motion.
I like to do it by resolution, so we have a track record and our records of, of what we've approved. Otherwise, we have to go back to motions. This, this will get filed with the, with the site plan, and I have a, I have actually a plan showing it from the Building Department. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll just say, with the, starting with the third whereas clause, I'll just say amended site plan approval to add an additional monument sign at the emergency access drive, and then I'll get rid of the rest of that.
Okay.
And then I'll get rid of the next whereas, the next whereas, and then I'll just say whereas the planning board determined that the proposed new monument sign, I'll get, strike the rest of it, will not result in substantial changes from the approved site plan, and hereby determines that a new public hearing is not required. And then we'll do, be further resolved, I'll reference the site plan with the signage, and I'll just scratch the first condition and go to the second condition, which is the signed permit approval by the Building Department.
And I guess another thing Lori brought, brought to our attention now would be, does the, the high school know?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, that maybe we should give them some notification.
It was their specific, it's right across from where they're dropping kids off in the morning.
Right. I agree with that. I mean, they could be able to at least have some opinion, they are entitled to it, because we, that's a, that's a huge difference.
Okay, well, back, back to the resolution. So the resolution is amended, is the way it was just discussed by, by Michelle.
Correct.
I will offer that resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Maoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso.
Aye.
I said that as a question, because I just, we didn't read the resolution. Assuming Michelle, you're revising the resolution, is it clear that it applies to the new monument only? I'm an aye.
As it was amended by Michelle in her discussion.
Not the question mark guy.
I was still working, I'm sorry.
All right. Board member Lori G, once more?
Aye.
Okay. Ed Maoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. So we've passed the portion for the monument sign, and we'll defer action on the rest of them.
Together with, obviously, allowing the, I know, school to chime in, I would think.
I'll, I'll speak with Scott about that.